At six thirty four P M on Wednesday, April the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one. I'd like to call into session the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee. Presuaded to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Eighteen, and the Governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the posted URL. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch, the meeting may do so in the following manner. N C A T, Educational Channel, Verizon Channel Twenty Nine, Charter Channel One Ninety Four, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel Thirty Seven, Charter Channel One Ninety Two. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And members of the public could register for vans for this webinar on the posted agenda. So the first item that we have on our agenda is action on the open minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved by Paul Bucka, seconded by Paul Desmond. Is there any discussion?
I have one correction.
Yes, Kathleen?
My name is spelled wrong at the top.
Okay, well, we will definitely make that correction onto the minutes. Paul Bucka, do you accept that correction in your motion?
I do.
And Paul Desmond, do you accept it also?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other corrections? Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Dan Kalenda?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it passes unanimous. The next item that we have on our agenda is educational business. There is none at this time. The next item that we have on our agenda is new business. Before we go under new business, I would like to have a consensus of the committee members on two items. As we've done before in the past, if there's a consensus, I would like to move up number three, letters of recognition to the first item under new business. Do I have a consensus of the committee to do so?
Sure.
Okay, is there any, anyone in negative not to do that?
So Joan, it's Dan. Would you mind just letting us know why? I think everyone would just, that would help.
I think that it was a matter of just getting this, some of the business done before we go into the mascot study group recommendation. And just to get that out. And there was going to be another presentation by the two gentlemen from Northborough on the Gil Homestead. And, but that is going to be presented under Sean Bevan's principal report. So because these two gentlemen from Northborough were going to present this award for the students at Algonquin that helped out to do the restoration of a homestead. I wanted to get those audience members so they wouldn't have to stay long into the agenda if they had other things they'd like to do.
That helps. Thank you, Joan.
Okay, thank you. The other item that I would like to do is after the letters of recommendation, I would like to add an audience sharing. We would still keep the audience sharing at the end, but I'd like to add a new one right before the mascot study recommendation to allow our constituents that are in our audience night and tonight to be heard before we move on. We have all received emails, phone calls, and other forms of communication. So we know that this recommendation from the mascot study group holds a lot of interest for our constituents. The format that I would like to do, if it is so accepted by the regional members, is that I would like to allot fifteen minutes for this audience sharing with each participant having only three minutes. Vice Chair Sean O'Shea will be the timekeeper. And at the end of two minutes, he will voice one minute so that speaker is aware the one minute remains. If more time is needed to hear from our constituents, then I will come back to you as a committee and we would agree by consensus to continue for another fifteen minutes. So at this time, I would like to see if there is a consensus to have an audience sharing before the mascot study group. Thumbs up, if I could see. Is anyone in opposition to this?
Joan, I just have a question.
Sure. Yes, Dan.
So I think it's a great idea. My concern is with the, you are right, there has been a significant outpouring of of interest in this particular topic and a lot of that has come at the twelfth hour. So I think it's a great idea, although it would have been great had it, had the communities been aware of this much further than ago than, you know, this very second, so that they would have known that there would have been a public comment time. So I think it's a great idea. I just wish it would have been earlier. Because I do, I have seen all of that traffic and then some where people are very interested, very concerned about, you know, what may happen tonight and so I, I'm supportive of the effort to add the time. I'm just concerned that it's coming very late with so much recent interest in the topic.
And Dan, I would say that I would take the fault on that because when Greg and I do do the agendas, if I had the insight of all those, as you said, those late emails and coming in and communication, I definitely would have put it on as having it two of them and it would have been posted on the agenda.
No, you're right, Joan. A lot of this, a lot of times the communities see these issues and they don't really recognize the gravity of it until the action has already been taken. So I think we're seeing a lot of that, but thank you for adding, I'm supportive of adding the time tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone in opposition of adding a extra audience sharing? Seeing none, then we're going to go to what was moved up, which was letters of recognition. Before I read the letter of recognition, which is addressed to the Algonquin Regional High School Administration, faculty and staff, I'd like to thank both towns of Northborough and Southborough for their support and guidance. Your questions, comments make each of us school community members a better listener and a better member. We definitely have come a long way since last March. We were faced then with so many unknowns and things that we know today, we did not know a year ago. Each community member and organization helped us to guide us and support us. We had to adjust and then adapt more and, and even adapt on the structure of education for our students. Even attending a summer Northborough Education Foundation meeting, I became aware that the usual welcome back to students and staff would look different since the parents knew and visitors were not allowed in the buildings. They wondered how were they going to do certificates of recognition to the staff? They could not get into the buildings. The education foundations found that they found a new way. They could place pinwheels at each entrance to the schools, including Algonquin Regional High School to welcome the students back. They learned to adapt. Our administrators, medical team always led us to the forefront and kept educating us. In our audience, I'm sure there are current students tonight, their parents, even former students and community members that no longer have children in our schools. This shows the deep interest and of caring together to listen and to learn from each other. It certainly does take a village. I'd like to thank the Northborough and Southborough, Northborough and Southborough community members for being part of our accomplishments. And at this time, I would like to read into record a letter that was supported by all school community members of Northborough and Southborough. And this will be sent to all parties that work within our Algonquin Regional High School community. It will go out to the administrators, faculty, staff, the nursing staff, custodians, part-time help. I don't know if we'll get to the bus drivers, but they're very needed and definitely even the cafeteria workers. All of these people have played a part in getting us to the success where we are today. The letter is dated April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one. Dear A R H S administrators, faculty and staff, all members of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee would like to extend sincere gratitude for all that you have done for A R H S students in the past year when your daily routines were suddenly changed due to the pandemic. You were faced with unknowns in how to deliver lessons, implement standards and objectives. And yet you, as A R H S administrators, faculty and staff, showed continual commitment to excellence and resilience. You had to be flexible to change how you work, socialized and completed daily commitments when the medical scientific worlds would enlighten us with new studies and understandings. Just when there was a good understanding of the new norm, it would suddenly change. You as educators had to adapt your methods of teaching to educate our students. Your dedication, warmth and compassion are qualities that can be invisible at times, but they are heard and seen from the hearts of our students. When they share that they can't wait to get back into their classrooms, be with their administrators, teachers, staff and simply be back into their routines. You have shown resilience in how you've had to restructure your working day to implement remote learning, hybrid model, standalone remote, S A R P, and in-person learning. There are no undergraduate or graduate courses to prepare you for what you faced since March, two thousand and twenty. Yet you succeeded and made it work. You have tried in earnest to communicate and understand all members of the A R H S community of educators, learners, to work efficiently and effectively for the betterment of the students. We wish you a rewarding remaining school year. In closing, Mrs. Joan G. Frank, Chair, and the entire membership of the Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee. This letter will be sent from Superintendent Martino or from Sean Bevan to all the A R H S parties tomorrow. Going on now, we will be going on to a new part of our agenda that's been added on is audience sharing. Before we go into audience sharing, I would like to just remind everybody that those would like to speak during this time, please be aware. This is a means of listening to our constituents so that we and Superintendent Martino can understand your concerns. We do not initiate dialogue or answer questions posed to us. If you wish to speak, please signify and Superintendent Martino will elevate you as a participant for three minutes. Please identify yourself by your name and your home address. Each speaker will have three minutes. And at the two-minute mark, Vice Chair Sean O'Shea will say one minute to allow you to frame your closing remarks. If you should be presenting or reading from a letter or a document and it is longer than three minutes, please have it sent to the regional school committee's email and it will be distributed to each member. As a reminder, audience sharing is not a time to debate or ask questions. Also remember to be respectful of all our community members and those that are in attendance tonight. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Greg to see if we have any audience members that would like to speak. And Sean, are you ready?
I'm happy to help as I can.
All right. I think that was me.
The other Sean, if something comes my way, I'm happy to help. Mr. O'Shea, I apologize.
I've got my timer going.
Right, we have three hands raised at this point in time. So Norman Corbin was the first gentleman to raise his hand. So I'm going to.
I'm starting Greg. Norman, Mr. Corbin is, is going to be hitting in the presentation of the Robert H. Kuhn Award. He may have a contribution on, on the, you know, on the public participation, but that may be why he's raising his hand, but you may want to ask.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize for raising my hand. I am here for the award.
All right. Right, our next person sharing?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, awesome. This is Jessica Levinson. I reside at thirteen Strawberry Hill Road in, in Southborough, Massachusetts. And I just wanted to, to read a quick statement here. You know, as a, as a Southborough community member and parent of students across Algonquin Regional, Neary and Woodward, I wanted to make my position known ahead of the vote and I understand and sat through the mascot focus study group last week. As you may recall, with the support of many other community members, ten months ago, I wrote and read a letter to this district pressing for significant change in curricula and a deliberate commitment to anti-racism in the wake of the murder of George Floyd, as well as several shared personal accounts of racism occurring within our schools in our two towns. This request specifically pushed for the public schools of Northborough and Southborough. Sorry, I just hit the cursor button. Northborough and Southborough to deliver on their mission that states that it is to provide an exceptional educational experience for every student in a safe environment. In my mind, in two thousand and twenty-one, an exceptional education doesn't perpetuate harmful stereotypes, nor does it perpetuate the cycle of racism by teaching through a predominantly white Eurocentric colonizing lens, accompanied too by the continued use of a Native American mascot. Racism damages and adversely affects education, self-esteem, cultural identities and behavior, thereby making it anything but a safe environment for our students and our staff alike. I attended the mascot group study presentation via Zoom on April fifteenth and I'm relieved that the consensus is to recommend retiring the mascot. And I am incredibly proud of the students who gathered, analyzed and presented native stances and studies. Each of them invested more hours in attempting to understand the native position than our district spends teaching our children about native history and culture each year. I recognize I'm running out of time. So at this point, there are five different pieces of indigenous legislation looming on the horizon that addresses mascots. Indigenous Peoples' Day, Indigenous Education, Indigenous Youth and Indigenous Heritage. And yet, our school district is teetering on the edge of looking like it only makes the correct decisions when the government comes knocking on the door. Instead of making tangible progress and responding responsibly and empathetically to requests from numerous indigenous organizations to stop the using their likeness and cultural items as mascots, we have as a district chosen instead to allow a predominantly white school committee to vote on their civil rights. Further, that decision sends a message to all marginalized groups that the district will not.
Jessica, thank you.
I, I thought we could send a letter ahead if we were, if we were reading longer, or do you just mute people?
Jessica, you can send it to the R S C email at nsborough.k dot m a dot K twelve.
Okay. Well, my hope is that you guys do the right thing. It's overdue.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Next, we have Kristin Wickstead.
Hi, school committee. Thank you for, thank you for taking this call for me. I, I just wanted to say that I followed along with the mascot study group for the last few months and I really appreciated all the hard work that the group put together, that the group did, putting together the recommendation. And I don't know if the people who have sent emails recently maybe don't realize how much work went into that, that study group over several months and I just want to say I, I applaud you. I applaud all the work that everyone did. And I applaud the fact that you kept people in the loop who asked to be in the loop like I did. I got regular emails about it. So this isn't coming out of the blue and, and I agree with Jessica on everything she said and I wish I could have finished her letter for her. So thanks a lot, everybody. I, I hope you do the right thing tonight, too. Thanks.
Kristin, could you give us your home address?
Yep, sure. Kristin Wickstead, two Stewart Brook Lane.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You have two other hands raised. Can you hear us?
I've become unmuted again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next is Beth Wickoff.
I'd like to yield my three minutes for Jessica Levinson to finish her statement, please.
Would Jessica like to do that? And Beth, what is your address?
Sorry, Beth, what is your address? Sorry, Joan, we lost her, so.
Okay. Can, is Jessica still available?
She, she is.
Madam Chair, we need to know the address of the other individual, though.
Yes, we need to get Beth's address. I agree.
All right, hang on till, Beth, I'm going to promote you to talk so you can just share your address.
I'm, I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
He can hear you. Yes, thank you.
Three Skyler Drive in Southborough, thirty-seven years.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome. I might want three more minutes if you would extend the fifteen minutes, which I hope you do.
Okay. That'll be the consensus of the committee.
Hello?
No.
Okay. So to, to back up one sentence, instead of making tangible progress and responding responsibly and empathetically to requests from numerous indigenous organizations to stop using their likeness and cultural items as mascots, we, this district has chosen instead to allow a predominantly white school committee to vote on their civil rights. Further, that decision sends a message to all marginalized groups that this district will not listen when they tell you that you are hurting them. Again, is this how we build a safe environment or is this how we continue to marginalize and harm folks? I asked my A R H S freshman son to recount what he's learned about the indigenous culture at school so far this year. He told me a two-day unit on the Trail of Tears. In two thousand and twenty-one, the curricula will barely cover native peoples and when it does, it will continue to be minimal through a colonial lens and trauma-focused. In closing, given that you have chosen to move forward with this exercise, I have three students at home who look to me for guidance on matters of justice and to be given examples of what is right and wrong. As educators. As educators, administrators and school committee members of this district, you have over four thousand students looking to you to lead by example. I ask you to do the right thing to heed Native voices and retire the mascot without delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Next, we have Rebecca Roman.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time this evening and I will try to keep my point as brief as possible.
Rebecca, can you give us your address?
Absolutely. Thirty-four Woodstone Road in Northborough.
Thank you.
As much as I appreciate the involvement of the members of the original mascot committee, my, my concern, and I speak on behalf of a few individuals, is that it seemed to be a leading, I would say, process, one that was obviously pushed to not evaluate whether or not it should be retired, but how it should be retired. I think there's many avenues that still need to be evaluated and I realized there was a lot of effort put into it. I'm not sure it incorporated the majority of the individuals that want to have a voice. Most importantly, I, I am concerned with, and we are concerned with the timing that everything occurred. In the middle of the pandemic, petitions were put out just at the end of the school year. Individuals on the petitions, some were related to the school, some had no relation to the school. Some of the comments posted indicated that obviously they didn't care so much except to just use it as a way to throw out cuss words. I would say that regardless of the outcome, whether it is to maintain the mascot at the Tomahawk or to retire it, I feel it though, as though the process needs to be, I would say, explored a little bit more thoroughly and perhaps even put to a town vote as opposed to just left to the discretion of the school committee. I will say that having a child in the school right now and having others who will be coming up into the high school in the next year and then in subsequent years, the thought is that due process needs to be followed. And this seems to be a focus group. And like I said, I have no bearing as to what the outcome is. I feel as though the process needs to be a thorough one and I feel like this was a lead process to a specific outcome. I'm happy to, to extend the conversation further, but I think we need to take the lead of other towns who have also been dealing with this and learn from their successes and learn from their failures and perhaps incorporate more individuals. Maybe the school committee makes a recommendation, but maybe we leave it to the town to decide. I'm not sure that the members on the committee will be able to represent the entire population of the Northborough and Southborough towns that obviously would want to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Sean, can you tell me how we're doing on our fifteen minutes for audience sharing?
I'd say we have about eight minutes left unless somebody can correct me. Yeah.
Okay. Greg, do we have other audience sharing members?
No hands raised at this time.
Okay.
Well, now we have two, three. So we have John Fouracre.
Okay. Since we have eight to seven minutes left, we'll see if we can get those three in.
Can I have all of them?
No, John, it's three. I'm sorry. So John, if you could identify yourself and your home address.
John Fouracre. Ninety-nine Pleasant Street, resident of Northborough since nineteen forty-two. Algonquin opened in nineteen fifty-six and I was there. I mean, fifty-nine, I apologize. And I want you to know, one of the things that has bothered me about this is that in the times that we've had in the past, you've turned around and you changed the newspaper of the school to a habbinga, habbinga. And now it is, it was used to, it used to be the smoke signal. How sad we take that away from, from the Algonquin Nation under the name of the Nipmuck Indians. This is, this has really been pressing to me. One of the things that I can tell you very strongly is that I believe nine or twelve people were indoctrinated in nineteen fifty-six to open Algonquin. There was three towns involved, Berlin, Northborough and Southborough. Berlin dropped out and joined Boylston to open up Tohonto. Northborough and Southborough opened Algonquin. We had some very prominent citizens doing this job. And when they opened up the school in nineteen fifty-nine, Algonquin was choo, chosen, Tomahawk was chosen. And for your information, if you open up the Class of nineteen sixty-one yearbook, you'll find that Tomahawk graduated with the Class of nineteen sixty-one. Tomahawk was named Bob Cummins. Bob Cummins designed all of the graphics and everything involved with that.
One minute left?
Algonquin has a lot of pride, a lot of spirit. Never has it been dropped down to a minus anything. The school is promoted with great crack academics, great spirit between debate teams, sports teams, everything. And every one of the people that have graduated from that school are proud graduates. I'm sorry I've run out of time, but I want you to really consider that the Nipmuck chief, who was a graduate from Northborough High School, Walter Vickers, was one of the proudest members of our town to follow through with that. I want you to please consider.
Thank you, John. Three minutes?
I'm sorry?
That is.
I would like to see you abandon your, your conquest to move forward on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
All right, next, we have William Redfern.
And Sean, how much time do we have left in the fifteen?
I think this, if it goes three minutes, this would take up.
This will be it, okay.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name's William Redfern. My address is two Fawcett Orchard Road in Northborough. I will hopefully be brief in my statements. I did take the opportunity to send the committee an email earlier this week. Hopefully you all received a copy of it. My opinion on whether or not the Tomahawk should remain the school mascot. I really want to take a minute here just to address the process. And I think the process has overall lacked transparency. And I certainly don't wish to belittle the amount of work that the student committee put into it. I think it was a great exercise for them. Probably a great educational exercise for them and really helped with community involvement. That being said, I feel a lot of what was done was sub rosa and purposely, I think to quote Rebecca earlier, a bit of a leading the witness, leading, leading this group of students to a predetermined outcome and a predetermined answer, which I can appreciate. And I think that was really, my opinion was solidified on that when I saw a news article yesterday get dropped, which basically saying the praises of that committee twenty-four hours before the vote was to be taken. So my ask is really for the school committee to not take a vote tonight, but rather to table the issue. Perhaps look at some surrounding communities. Millis is an example. Principal in the Millis School District happens to live in my neighborhood, shared with me a video of their school committee meeting when they voted on whether or not to keep the, the Mohawk as their high school mascot. I think it was a much more open, transparent debate and I appreciated it. I would also like the committee to look at what recently happened. And of course, the town is now escaping me, but there was a school committee in north of Boston that voted to get rid of Native American mascot and the town took a non-binding referendum vote to overturn that, which.
One minute left?
And they carried the vote. So I just don't want to rush on a decision here in the name of what's convenient or what's easier. We have two choices in front of us. The easy and convenient one is to bow to the political correctness and just say, let's be done with it. The more difficult one is the one that would actually benefit the students in the community. Let's take a look at what we have. Let's educate our students on it. Let's really look at both sides of the issue. And let's show them how democracy really works and how we can have a civilized debate and share both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, William. So Sean, are we at the end of our fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Greg, are there any other audience members?
We have one more person with their hands raised.
So consensus of the committee, would you like to continue with just this one more and make that the conclusion of our audience sharing?
Madam Chair, has this person spoken yet?
No.
No.
This is, yielded her, her time to another speaker.
My only ask is, is the individual gonna say anything different than the speaker that she yielded her time to? If not, then I personally say we have a loaded agenda and we need to move on with our business.
Other school community members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Chris.
I, I would actually, well, I agree with Dan. My, I actually have no objection to allowing this individual to speak. As long as they just use whatever the remainder of the time that they had not yielded, that would be my ask.
Okay, I guess Sean, I mean, Sean O'Shea would have to go back and figure out how many, I, I think.
A minute thirty-five.
A minute. Oh, very good. All right, so.
He's hired.
Okay, what is the consensus? I've heard from two members. What is the consensus? Is the consensus to give to the last speaker a minute thirty-five, the remaining time on? Okay, see a thumbs up? Thumbs up?
If nothing different, my thumb is down. Thank you.
Okay. One in opposition? Okay, so the consensus is we will have, this will be the last speaker and Sean, the time will be one minute and thirty-five seconds. So we can go on to the agenda.
All right, Beth, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Beth Wickoff, Blue Skyler Drive. So I was going to specifically address some of what Rebecca Roman said, but the last gentleman, I believe it was William Redfern, spoke to the students being, both, both speakers spoke to the students being led on this study committee. Well, I am here to tell you that the students weren't led by any adults on that committee. The students led with their voice and their research and their data. And you underestimate your Algonquin students when you think that there were adults on that committee who were predisposed to a position. There were several that were not. And the students with whom I worked did, they were the leaders. And they are the ones who see this change as necessary and as important as anything in their lives right now. They're embarrassed when they're at sporting events and Algonquin students are yelling racist f-attacks because we have allowed an environment of stereotyping to exist. Is that my minute? Sean, I couldn't hear you.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, Sean, thank you. So I just want to speak on behalf of Sean Bevan and Greg Martino. No one was led. This, this study committee came at it from all different positions and did the research and did the data and listened to the Native American voice and came to the conclusion to retire the mascot.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Boom, mic drop under, under one thirty-five.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the first audience sharing that we have. And now we go back to the regular agenda. Under new business is the mascot study group recommendation. Before I turn that over to Superintendent Marno, I would just like to summarize what has occurred since our October twenty-first, twenty-twenty school committee meeting. At that time, the regional committee decided to move forward with the implementation of a study group to review the ARHS mascot in response to a petition received in the spring. We directed Superintendent Martino to create a mascot review short-term study group with it being chaired by Algonquin's principal, Sean Bevan. The composition of this group consisted of sixteen individuals who were a representation of community members, students, parents, school committee members, faculty members, student athletes, the athletic director and members of the Coalition for Equity Working Group. We provided as a school committee a framework for a timeline since we requested that this working group to be short-term. Principal Bevan has led this short-term working group with outstanding leadership and has provided to parents, students, community members of Northborough and Southborough and us, the regional school committee member, committee with updates of the workings of the mascot group since November, concluding with the mascot study group presentation last Thursday, April the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. That brings us to where we are tonight at the April twenty-eighth regional meeting to hear from Superintendent Gregory Martino and for him to present his recommendation. In conclusion, once again, our superintendent Greg Martino, his administrative staff, principal Sean Bevan and the membership of the mascot study group have kept us ahead of any future mandates being set by the state and national leaders. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Martino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on Thursday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the study group for mascot review recommended that the regional school committee retire Algonquin Regional High School mascot, the Tomahawk. Immediately following the meeting, the materials that the study group provided to the school committee and the recording of the meetings were posted to the district website. Additionally, community members were provided an opportunity to communicate information that they thought was important for the regional school committee members to read before tonight's meeting. All the communications received throughout the seven-month process were shared with the committee members in preparation for tonight's deliberation. I want to thank the study group members for their time, commitment and dedication to their charge. The debate as to whether the Tomahawk should remain the school's mascot has spanned multiple decades. Ignoring the Native Americans' opposition to the use of Native American mascots, symbols and nicknames is not aligned with Algonquin Regional High School's values. Continuing the use of the Tomahawk as the school's mascot reinforces negative stereotypes and overshadow past and present contributions, perspectives and struggles of Native American people. I support the study group for mascot review's recommendation to retire Algonquin Regional High School's current mascot, the Tomahawk. In hearing from many in support of the Tomahawk mascot, I acknowledge that usage of the mascot had no disrespectful intent toward any Native American community. I also recognize that for some, including alumni, the memories and successes associated with the Tomahawk are positive and valued. Retiring the mascot is not intended to erase or devalue these positive memories. Regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, Algonquin Regional High School will continue to be a leader in academics, athletics and fine and performing arts. As we look to the current and future generations of Algonquin students, I'm confident that they will develop as local and global citizens who practice the district's core values, integrity, empathy, inclusivity, equity, perseverance and respect. And thank you.
Okay, so Greg, your recommendation to the school committee is to retire the mascot, the Tomahawk?
That is correct.
Okay. So at this time, I'm just going, I'm going to open up discussion, just discussion for the school committee members on the recommendation by Superintendent Martino to retire the mascot, the Tomahawk. At this point, no motions will be accepted. I would like to allow a twenty-minute timeframe that will allow school committee members to discuss the superintendent's recommendation. I would like to allow a twenty-minute timeframe that will allow school committee members to discuss the superintendent's recommendation. If at the end of twenty minutes, the members still, members still have not spoken, I will extend that discussion period for another twenty minutes. After each member who wants to speak has done so, then I will entertain motions. Remember that each motion has to be seconded and another discussion period for that motion before it's voted on. If on the motion presented. And another school committee member makes an amendment. It also has to be seconded. At that time, that amendment will be voted on by the entire committee. And if it passes in the majority, then it will become part of the motion. And then we will finally vote on the amended motion. Our goal tonight is to have a mascot for Algonquin Regional High School. That we can all rally around something that we can support and that will stand the test of time. Uh, Vice Chair Sean O'Shea, could you be a timekeeper again for twenty minutes?
On it.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would like to open it for discussion. Um, first up, I have Paul Bucka, then Dan Kalenda and Kathleen Highland. Paul Bucka.
Thank you, Joan. Um. You know, I, I think mostly I want to just kind of recognize the committee, all the work they did, the presentation that they made. Almost a couple of weeks ago or so now. Clearly a lot of work, um, a- and as Greg mentioned, this is not the first time we've had this conversation, uh, several years ago. But during my tenure on the school committee, there was discussion about it and, and we tabled it back then because it seemed like it was the right thing to do. Um, based on everything that I've heard from the committee and their research, you know, I think the time has come for, for us to. Kind of recognize that we should move on from the tomahawk and, and come up with a different sort of mascot for the school. Um, you know, going forward. I, I'm a little, um, not in agreement with some of the recommendations of what the committee came out with in terms of. Taking five or six or seven or eight years to finally retire all, all of it. I think that that's. I think that does an injustice to the committee and. Would, would lobby hard for us to figure out some way to free up funds so that we could accelerate that pace. But, uh, I think based on everything I've heard and read and, and, and learned, uh, over the last couple of weeks, I would be in support of. A motion to retire the tomahawk.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, next I have is Dan Kalenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, as everyone on this committee knows, I respect all of members, including both Pauls. And, uh, and I know that, uh, from what I've seen, what I've heard, both Pauls are ready to retire the mascot. Um, I have, uh, I, I also have motions prepared, motions prepared to, um, uh, to, to. Uh, take an additional sixty, ensure that we have heard from all community members, all alumni, all parents. Uh, who have a vested interest in, in this outcome. Um, we have seen i- an absolute outpouring of, uh, community involvement just in the last number of days. Um, and I know that this is, we have been doing this for the last number of months. The community, it seems to be predominantly, or at least in large measure, engaged in the last number of days. And so I am fearful that we may do something tonight that does not reflect. The overall consensus of both communities. I think from what I saw, at least from the. Uh, the, the emails that have come in, it has been two to one to keep the mascot. Uh, and you, you know, the committee has, has gone the opposite way of saying. No, let's not do what at least the current consensus is, um, you know, let's, let's get rid of the mascot. And I am concerned that we are doing something, even though we've been doing it for a while, the community is only just recently engaged in this. And for this to be successful, either to, to retire it or to not. Um, my, my concern is that, you know, we need to hear from more of the community. And so that, that is a particular motion that I plan to, to, you know, to, to, to offer. And I think the other thing that is important to, to recognize is that the tomahawk is a, is a tool. It was created by. Native Americans as a tool. Uh, the fact that it, it is, it has been used for decades as the mascot. Of our high school, uh, reflects the great pride that the school has in the Native American community. And, and as Mr. Martino said, it is, it has never been centered on racism ever. And that, uh, I have a fear that if we, if we retire it tonight, then wh- what are we saying to those individuals who have. Known this mascot as part of their high school time for decades? Are they racist? Are we saying they're racist? I hope not. And so I have those concerns and I hope we listen to more of the community who is. Just now seems to be getting engaged. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was muted. Thank you, Dan. Next I have Kathleen Highland.
Thank you. I speak to you as a Millis Mohawk, so I'm glad to hear that they are changing that. Um, I really hadn't thought about it for decades since I graduated because it, it really. Was not my identity. It was the feel of the town, how my teachers made me feel. Those were the memories that I carry forward about having grown up in Millis. As well as having an awesome music education. And the committee for the work that they've done, I remember when it started and the students did the petition. And they were just so aggravated that we had to have a study group and I just like, oh, I love young energy, you know, they really wanted to tackle that. I think that's really shown in the pre and post-student survey, following their orientation to the information. I do think it's education that will help us nudge the needle against all anti-diversity, um, experiences that we're. Working toward, whether it is gender or, um, social justice or neurodiversity. Um, that moving the needle, pushing the needle happens with reflection, with asking questions and listening really hard. That's what I felt. In the presentation last week, quantitative and qualitative data for sure. Like to honor people's memories, just because the Mohawk meant nothing to me doesn't mean the Teahawk means nothing to them. Um, but I do think it's a reflection of the times in which we live in, a response that we could be proud of. To really look at what the students have done and they were the most convincing during that presentation. I mean, Sarah was just, and I mentioned it that night, was just tremendous. Um, I would like to incorporate, um, suggestions from the community in the many letters we've had. To make sure that local education is taught. Um, and that the founding of this community displaced Nipmunk Indians at the time. And that this should be known as well as the first pandemic in the winter of seventeen forty-nine. Where sixty children died. These are the things that we can carry forward. As lessons to not only understand the world at large, but the world at small. So I thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, next is Sean O'Shea.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd just like to say after reviewing all of the student comments, all the public comments, the research. And reflecting on what I want Algonquin to be for its students leads me to s- support retiring the mascot. Uh, there are clearly a lot of emotions and opinions and feelings around this issue. And it's a controversial and polarizing topic. And, you know, first I believe that the, the research and what native speakers say when they, um, say that it is, uh, hurtful to them. And, and secondarily, I believe that the mascot should be something that expresses our, the values and characters of the school. Having a mascot that's hurtful to some and polarizing to others, um, does not accomplish that goal, uh, for me. It should respect the quality of education the students receive, the relationships that are built. And the accomplishments of the students. And for those reasons, I, I support, uh, retiring the mascot and finding a new one to represent us.
Uh, thank you, Sean. Sean, how are we doing on time?
Eleven minutes.
Okay, I think we'll continue. Uh, we still have, uh, we have, uh, Chris Covina first coming up and then Kathy Key and Kath and Ca- Karen Ayers. So Chris Covina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, this is, um. I'm coming at this, I guess, from a couple of perspectives. I've spent a lot of time reading through, uh, the community responses to the survey. And, um, you know, as, as I share with my wife, you know. This, this has been weighing, the decision, or, you know, for this has been kind of weighing on me fairly heavily over the past couple of weeks. And I try to think of my personal experiences with, uh, my students at the school that I teach at, and I think of what. Our responsibility is as a community and, and what our responsibility is as a school. And, um, you know, our responsibility, or I believe our responsibility really is to ensure that everybody feels valued and welcome. In, in the school that they're, that they're attending. And, you know, as a community, we should want our, everyone to feel welcome in, in an environment that they are comfortable to learn in. It's. I, I agree with Superintendent Martino. This, um, the effort to change the mascot. Uh, in no way minimizes the accomplishments of our clubs, our extracurricular, uh, clubs, our, our athletic teams. Because those are ultimately people, you know, there are people that make up those teams and it's the people that have, uh, made those accomplishments. And, um, those accomplishments will continue. And as it relates to the study group, it really is an amazing credit to the study group. I work with kids, I work with high school students all day. And it's a credit to Algonquin's program. It's a credit to Algonquin's program that a group of students, um. Who, if the group of students represented, uh, a small fraction of the population, that they're able to come out and s- and say what would be considered a generally unpopular thing. That might cast them in an unpopular light in the remainder of the school community. But to be able to come out and defend. Defend their research and defend their peers, um, it, it's, it's, it's a testament to the strength of. The academic program and the learning environment that is present at Algonquin. One of the things, uh, that I saw come up quite frequently in the, uh, large quantity of communication that was sent to the school committee. And through the survey was, um, and Mr. Kalenda also, uh, alluded to this, was that the tomahawk is a tool. And I would say that at this point, the tomahawk has elevated itself beyond a tool at this point and it is a symbol. And symbols have meaning. And symbols have meaning to different people. And, um, it's very apparent through, um, the results of the study group and through the community involvement. That, um, this symbol is causing harm to some of our students. And that really violates, I think, what, um. It's come to violate what we believe to be a welcoming community. And, um, we want to, I think we want to have an environment where everybody feels comfortable coming to school. And learning and feeling part of the community. And this would be a step, uh, in the right direction of doing that. Uh, and my last comment as it relates to this was, um, something that has come up multiple times in some of the readings that I've done, which is. Um, I've also heard that, um, Native American symbols being used throughout schools, it was originally put in place to honor, to honor Native Americans. And that is an honorable action. That is an honorable thing to do. I am in total agreement with that. However, if, if a group of individuals, um, says that it is not an honor, then it is really not. Our place to say that, well, it is an honor. We, we are honoring you, even though you don't think we're honoring you. We are honoring you. So, um, I think these are, these are really important things, uh, that we need to consider as a community. And we need to make sure that we are, uh, we stand up for our community. And I'm sorry I went on kind of long here, but, um, I, I would support retiring, uh, the mascot at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, Chris Covina. I have next Kathy Key.
Um, thanks, John. So again, um, you know, I really appreciate the work that the group has done as well. And like Chris, this has been a constant weighing on my short, like, my thought process. Since, um, we heard from the study group. And I guess, my one question would be that, oh, just, I think the process, it, it worked well. But, um, I guess I'm just curious of, of, you know, we're, we, we had so many community members reach out and I understand that. No matter how much speech you do with people, they will still say, oh, I didn't get it. It was at the bottom of the email. The whole nine yards of why they didn't communicate. But I'm just curious of why we didn't have this survey to the. Public before we had, before we started the study group. Just to get a feeling of what, um, they really care.
Would you, uh, like Greg or Sean to answer that question?
Yeah, I'm just, I just, you know.
Okay, Greg or Sean, would you like to respond?
Sure. So in the beginning, and I'll, I'll start and then Sean can, can add some thinking that happened within the study group. So. In the beginning, you know, we talked about how to, how to best seek input from the community as this is, um. You know, this is an important topic, uh, a controversial topic. Um, and it was discussed around, do we survey? Um, and, uh, we decided that the best course of action was to let the study group kind of move forward with its study and its work. And seeking input and feedback. And they were very open about receiving communications along the way. Um, being transparent with sharing information, their meeting agendas, topics and so forth. Um, but ultimately just decided not to survey, um, the community on an up or down vote on to, to retire the ma- mascot or keep it.
Yeah, I don't know that I can add too much more than that. I, uh, a point about two-thirds of the way through, probably in January, February, we rec- recognize that. Um, at getting, uh, taking the temperature of the student body would be important and we decided that. Um, a survey could be used with a vote and we were really eager to find out how to. Go on this topic and how can we provide a little bit of structure and education around even just taking their temperature on that issue? And that's how we, uh, ended up doing focus groups with, which got us, um, I think we had about four hundred or four hundred and ten students participated in it. Which represents about a third of our student body. So, um, we decided that a survey wasn't going to be as useful at that time as a focus.
Okay. And like I, you know, and I know that, um, there's a lot of action going on in the State House and stuff like that. And if it is our, our decision to retire the tomahawk, I do hope. That we re- you, that we don't erase it from why we were called the tomahawks. Cause I know that in the past, you know, the past, when we've had discussions about the tomahawk. We said we educate kids on it and I think we dropped the ball on that. And I really hope that we don't drop the ball going forward because that would be such a shame. And I guess my other thing is that, um, you know, just when people talk about respect or not respect. You know, I have three kids go through Algonquin. I have three kids that played, you know, three kids in the sports, the whole four years and not once did they. For people who say was, they were disre- not once was it a disrespect to play for Algonquin tomahawks. They were proud to play, wear the uniform and they did not, you know, see it as, as, um. Disrespect at all. So, you know, I just, I really hope that we, you know, continue the education, um, even if we change it. That's it. Thanks, John.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Um, next is Karen Ayers.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. Um, thank you. I know I was coming in last. Um, I know we all have tremendously. Uh, different feelings and, and it's emotional and it's, this is definitely not an easy thing for anyone to do. And I just want to give my perspective as an alumni of a high school in Central Mass who did retire their mascot. Um, so, and it was not clearly di- a very different situation and something that Joan said. Really struck a chord with me and that was a mascot that could stand the test of time. And I am a graduate of Auburn High School, class of nineteen ninety, and we were the dandies. And if, does anyone know what a dandy is? Probably not. It was a Yankee doodle dandy. And no one knew and we were constantly made fun of and. It was just something that no one real, it did not stand the test of time, quite honestly. It was from the early nineteen hundreds when the high school came into be. So. Two years after I graduated, my brother's class, um, the students put forward a petition to retire and to change that mascot. And they are now known as the Auburn Rockets, which is so fantastically. And they are now known as the Auburn Rockets, which is so fantastically historical, because Auburn Mass is the home of Robert Goddard. And so I just offer that as perspective, because we, we, times change, and we are in a changing time right now, and that, I just figured I'd offer that, because I'm still an alumni. I was a dandy. My, I was a three sport athlete. My memorabilia still, still says dandy. My high school jacket still says dandy, and I'm still proud of it. And so I think I think that we can also do better as a high school and change with the time. So that's my story.
Thank you, Karen.
The 20 minutes is essentially up.
Okay. Is, is there any other school community members that have anything else? I know there's a couple that we haven't heard from, just offering anything at this time from any other board members?
Can I have a question?
Yes, Kathleen.
So I anticipate there's going to be a motion, and then there's going to be amendments to motions, et cetera, et cetera. Are we not going to have a chance to speak about amendments or about motions? Is, is this it in terms of speaking on this topic?
I envisioned that we could have this open discussion, and then when it came time for a motion, that we could have, if a motion had several amendments to it, that we would then talk about it at that time?
Okay, thanks.
But Kathleen, please interject at any time, okay? Because this is our meeting, okay?
Always do.
I know. Thank you. And because the 20 minutes are up, I see that we have two more hands. And someone who I have not heard from is Paul Desmond. I would just like to say that I'm in agreement with the superintendent, and I'm in agreement with those of you who are supporting the superintendent's recommendation. I cannot say it any more eloquently than all of you have done tonight. And I have been on this committee when we looked at this in 1997. So here we are again, some 20, you know, years, 20 plus years, 10, 10 years plus, and we're looking at it again. So as I said in my opening statement and what Karen Ayers says, we need to find something that stands the test of time. And if we do not listen to those constituents of ours and representatives that are saying that this is hurtful, then we're not holding to the ideals of what we teach our students in, in school to have empathy and to have understanding. If somebody is hurting or someone doesn't like something, all the teachers, K through 12, would reach out and find out what it is and try to solve the problem. So for that reason, I do support the superintendent. I will now go to Paul Desmond, because I haven't heard from him. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, as I think everyone knows, I do have a motion that I want to put on the table at the appropriate time, so. But to Kathleen Polczko's point, it is long. That's why I sent it out to everybody, but, you know, obviously we couldn't deliberate ahead of time. So my thought was to just open the floor up for any comments on, on the motion itself, and, you know, that way, if appropriate, we can make adjustments to it before it's actually formally introduced, and that way, hopefully, we can avoid a lot of amendments.
Okay.
That was my thought.
Okay. The hands that I see right now, I had Dan Kalenda up there. So what I would like to do, Dan, I'd like to close out the discussion and go on to the motion part. I just want to make sure that you didn't have anything in the discussion.
No, Madam Chair, I did not. I, and I, and thank you, Paul, for letting everyone know, the public know, that there was a motion, that it was already been sent out. You know, I, I did not do that in advance of the meeting. I also have some motions to, to present, but if, if we're not, I have nothing further to add other than when you're ready for motions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let me just go to Paul Buck and Kathleen Holland, because I'm going to make sure that they have their opportunity. If there's any last discussion before we look at, I give the floor back to Paul Desmond. Paul Buck.
Thank you, Joan. Yeah, so just a couple of, couple of rather minor points, I think, on, on the motion that I think Paul is, is about to present. One, one early paragraph in her calls for the superintendent to prohibit the use of the tomahawk going forward by any of the school organizations or affiliations with the school, and, and I just, I'm not exactly positive that Greg has necessarily that authority to prohibit across so many different organizations, and that I thought maybe verbiage like prohibit, when possible, or otherwise discourage might be better phrasing there than to try and ask Greg to do the impossible. And then the, the only other comment that I had was, there was, there was some talk of, you know, taking time for the more expensive replacement activities to go in the normal course of our capital planning. And included in that was a, a recommendation that that would include uniforms, and I, I would, I would hope that the committee would agree with me that if we're going to do this, we shouldn't take forever to do it, and maybe, maybe we should exempt uniforms from, from Paul's motion, so that if we can figure out a way, either with our own budgeting, or if you're working with the boosters or, or such, we can accelerate that process. I think, I think we want our kids to be, you know, to be not wearing tomahawks as quickly as we can make that happen. You know, I think everyone will understand if there are buildings and scoreboards and gigantic paintings on gym floors, that, that that's going to take some time, and that's going to take some money. You know, where, where possible, maybe a scoreboard could be, you know, the, the verbiage could be covered up on, on the cheap until it's time to replace the scoreboard, but I, I, I would really like to kind of purposely accelerate, you know, uniform replacement if we can. So those would be my two comments that I would, I would throw out for kind of general discussion. And, you know, if there seems to be some, some consensus, then maybe a, maybe a small modification to Paul's motion would be in store. Thanks for your time.
Okay. Kathleen Holland? If you have any further discussion, no motions, because I'm just going to finish this discussion part off.
I would like to just ask if it was prudent to add that this local history would be taught intentionally throughout the school system? I know we're just dealing with high school.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to close out this section of school committee discussion, and now I'd like to go to the point of entertaining motions, and then, again, we have to have the discussion with it. I think, Paul, you had got, Paul Desmond, you had the gun?
Yeah, if you want to go that route, I know, I mean, if, I know Dan wants to delay the vote, and obviously, if we vote on my motion first and it passes, then we won't be delaying the vote, but so I don't know if you want to deal with his first, or?
Okay, I'm looking for direction from the members. Would you, members, would you like me to take, as I said to Dan, he told me that he had several motions. I told him it could only be one at a time. Paul, would you like to defer to Dan and let him make a motion? School committee members?
So willing to committee, I mean, I'm willing to do that.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, I, I would say that Mr. Kalenda should make his, should be allowed to make his motion, because Mr. Desmond's motion is quite encompassing.
Okay. Kathleen Polczko, I saw your hand raised.
So, so I think Paul Desmond's motion is a direct result of a lot of the work that was done on the mascot study group. And and I think that what would be most prudent, to use your word, is to have his motion on the table, and then if Dan wants to amend it, he can amend it, but you know, Chris is right, it's very, it's very long and all encompassing. So, so I think that we need to hear about all the parts of that motion before we entertain amendments to it or the process.
Okay, so your, your suggestion that we should hear Paul Desmond's motion, go to Dan, listen to his motion?
Well, or to listen to his amendments. But that, my understanding was Dan was going to have amendments to the, to Paul's motion.
So, so Kathleen, that is partially true.
Okay.
If his amendment, if, if his motion, which now it, it's, it's out in the open, we've all seen it. I, I did not share anything in advance of this meeting, but we've all seen Paul's. So, yes, if, if Paul's passes, I would offer an amendment to that, but I also had my own amendment, excuse me, I also had my own motions first that I wanted to offer, but I didn't know that we were supposed to do these in advance of the meeting.
Okay, so, so yours are separate, separate motions, they're not amendments to Paul's?
Separate motions, and then one of mine would have been an amendment to Paul's if mine failed. But I didn't know how the, the chair was going, going to accept motions. Is it those who submitted them in advance of the meeting?
No, no.
You know, on the, on the day of the meeting.
No, the, the reason that that came up is that at our last Wednesday's meeting, Paul, who served on the mascot study group, mentioned that through their work that there was a town that had a motion. And I had said to him that to share it with Superintendent Martino and myself. And then that's how it involved. I have never, and nor has any other chairperson ever requested motions ahead of time. It was just that this was something to share with us. Since Paul has shared his with us, and we know what it, what it can, what it stands as right now, Dan, I would like to take one of your motions to give you the same consideration. So I, I would like you to, if you have a motion, to make one emotion, motion, and it has to be seconded.
And, and mine simply was, and we can, if you want, Madam Chair, to put them all on the table, but mine simply was, the first one was simply to, to to not have this vote tonight, based on the amount of, and the influx of communications that we received in the last number of hours, you know, days, let alone hours, that we give the communities time to really, I want to do the right thing by both of our communities. So my suggestion was that we not do this tonight, that we do this 30 or 69, 30 or 60 days from today. We still do it, of course. Because the work has been done by the committee, and then we have an obligation to respond to that. Fear is that we're doing it without the full involvement of our community that we're representing. That would have been my first motion.
Okay, Dan, you, you said motion, and then you said my suggestion would be. So do you want to, do you want to put that in a form of a motion?
I do move that we not had, that we table, to use Mr. Budka's term, that we table is not for ad infinitum, but for 30 or 60 days to ensure that we have heard from anyone in the community who wants to participate in this monumental decision of this board. That was my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Seeing that there is none, that motion has failed. Okay, and Dan, for clarification, you said that you had your other motions would fall under amendments?
And the only other motion, the only, the only other motion, Madam Chair, was to, and I, and I, everyone knows I respect Superintendent Martino greatly, but my other motion would, would have been, but I hear and I see the consensus of this entire group is that they are going to change the, the mascot tonight. My other motion would have been not to agree to superintendent's, the superintendent's recommendation. But I am clearly now not going to waste the, the committee's time and, and forwarding that. I will wait to amend Mr. Budka's motion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for the information, and thank you for the time that you put into yours, and I appreciate it. So now, so now we're going to go back to Paul Desmond. A motion.
Okay, first, I just want to give a little background on this. You may know, Walpole was the model for this, and I, I talked to the chair and the vice chair there on, on where, how they came up with this and why. And the idea is to address questions that are likely to come up, if indeed we do vote to change the mascot, such as what about all these old banners and trophies with the old logo on them, and how are we going to pay for all this, and how do we pick a new mascot? On and on. So you know, I tried to word this to give us flexibilities in different areas, like the timetable. Paul Buck, to your point, and there's nothing in here that says, you know, that puts a timetable on it. So it's up to the school committee if we, you know, find some money, or we, we decide it's important enough to, to do all the uniforms more quickly than the regular pace, then it's certainly within our purview to do that, the way this is worded. There's, to Kathleen Holland's point, there's a paragraph in there on the education, and, you know, providing education to our students and the Algonquin people, which I, I think is still important, given the name of the school isn't changing. There's a, a bit on how to deal with the existing banners and plaques and such. I could add to some other towns that created an, an area dedicated sort of to the history of the school, so, you know, if we choose to, we can do that. Well, that's the thinking. So you know, Paul, I got your suggestion on the prohibit versus encourage, and I can certainly make that change, and I did. But if anyone else, you know, has any suggestions, I guess, it's easier to take care of them now. I can make the change before I actually formally make the motion.
Paul Desmond, would you be able to share that motion, what you have on the screen, so people can look at it if they don't have their copy with them right now?
I don't know. Greg, can I do that?
While you're looking for that, Paul Buck has a question. Paul?
Well, just, just kind of a clarification, I guess, Paul. The, the way, the way I recall your motion reading was that, you know, the things like scoreboards, gym floors, and uniforms would be replaced in the normal timeframe, as though there was no change necessarily to the, to the mascot, and and as a result, from what I recall, we heard from Mike Moserino a couple of weeks ago, was, you know, that stretches over, over several years. And although your, your motion doesn't have a particular timeframe in it, it does, you know, it does relate to the capital plan, sort of, of how we replace that stuff going forward, and I just, I wouldn't want to be hamstrung in any way by including uniforms in that, and just but again, it's just kind of one guy's opinion. If it, if it doesn't resonate with the group, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it, and you're right, as, you know, as the years go by, as we, as we work the budget, you know, we'll try and figure out some other ways maybe to accelerate it, but I just wouldn't want to be held, held back by the, by the, by the call for, you know, for taking our time with uniforms, like we're going to take our time with scoreboards.
Yeah, I hear you, and I, I don't think that would be holding us back at all. I mean, it says if, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Oh, it says, you know, the school committee determines that can replace or reserve us more quickly in a fiscalized manner, and/or donations or grants can be leveraged for change, and, you know, we could go ahead and do that.
Okay, I have, Paul, before you continue, I have Kathy Key. Kathy, do you have a question or comment on the process, or do you have it on an amendment?
Yeah, so, so mine was going to go back to the, the finance part of it, because I, like, I understand Paul Buck is part of it, but I also listened to the boosters and having them say that, you know, we just were, we're coming up, the year that we just had, we just can't go to businesses and ask people for money. And even with our town budgets and stuff like that, I just think, you know, we should go ahead and do what we can do. But it's a really hard year right now to, to get money from companies and businesses and stuff like that. To have, you know, I think that they would help to a point, but I just think it's a really hard year to go for them, so if we can find grants and other opportunities, I think that we need to go that route. And I think, after talking to Paul Desmond, he had also said that, I mean, some of, like the scoreboards and stuff like that, was, it's already tough to try to, that, that kind of stuff needs to be replaced anyways. And I think that Mike Moserino said that there are some of the uniforms for the varsity that are getting moved around this year as well, or whenever we come up with. I mean, the, the hard part is, we don't have a mascot, so it's going to be really hard to just change a uniform without a mascot, and I think that that's something that may take a few months as well.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Paul, I think before we make any changes, we have to have a motion on the floor, and it has to be seconded, and then it has to have discussion.
Okay. In that case, I move to, that we vote to accept the recommendation from Superintendent Martino and the mascot study group to retire the tomahawk as mascot for Algonquin Regional High School. And that the North Borough, South Borough Regional School Committee, through the superintendent, high school principal, and athletic And that the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee, through the superintendent, high school principal and athletic director, prohibit when possible or otherwise discourage the production of any new gear, merchandise or apparel bearing the name or depiction of the tomahawk by any organization, affiliate organization or group associated with the Algonquin Regional High School. And that the Algonquin Regional High School leave unaltered the championship banners hanging in the high school gym, trophies and plaques in the, in the athletic hall of fame, or otherwise determine an appropriate way to acknowledge the rich history that these and other items, other similar items represent. And that a renaming study group be formed consisting of a similar mix of students, faculty, school committee and community members as the mascot study group to recommend several names for Algonquin Regional High School's new mascot. And that the renaming study group make its recommendation of several names to the superintendent and the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee, who will then charge its current students of Algonquin Regional High School to vote to determine their preferred recommendation. And that the large scale infrastructure that bear references or images of the tomahawk, such as scoreboards and the floor of the basketball court, as well as uniforms and other gear bearing tomahawk references, be replaced in accordance with their normal replacement and repair schedule, unless the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee determines they can be replaced or resurfaced more quickly in a fiscally sound manner and or donations or grants can be leveraged for the change. And that the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee acknowledges that this initiative is a first step in a wider ongoing process of educating students on the history of Algonquin people. And finally, that the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee encourages the towns of Northborough and Southborough to come together around its new mascot.
Second.
Seconded by?
Paul Buck.
Paul Buck. Okay, um, um, looking for guidance from the committee, what I think would be the best is if we go section by section and see if there are any, um, amendments that have to be made to that. That, that won't be a vote, we'll just by consensus. Does, eh, Paul, how do you feel about that, since it is your motion?
I don't know, I just, if somebody has amendment, you know, I guess let's hear them.
Okay, so could everybody go to the first paragraph which begins vote? Does anybody, is the, does anybody have any amendments to that section? If you do, raise your hand for that section. I see we have two hands raised right now. Dan, do you have an amendment to that section?
So, Madam Chair, I, I, eh, as I let you know earlier today, admit, um, I, I had a hard stop at eight o'clock, so un- unfortunately, you know, you all get to, you know, please finish this out. I know where it's going. I do not have, uh, an amendment to this. Um, I would vote in the negative. Um, I also hope that this committee, um, recognizes that the decades of, of alumni who have represented Algonquin Regional High School and their mascot, the tomahawk, um, you know, I hope that they, and, and I think I've heard this, but I hope it is demonstrably stated. None of them are considered racist because the fact, because of, you know, they have had this mascot and this moniker as part of their heritage. None of what we are doing tonight says that anyone who has been part of this school is anything but respectful of Native Americans and Native American history and culture. So I, um, uh, I, I have, I do not agree with Mr. Desmond's motion. Um, I will leave it to the committee, of course, to, to continue on making amendments as they want. Unfortunately, I had a hard stop at eight o'clock. Um, but I hope that the, the history of the Algonquin tomahawk community is recognized and is not demonized by this committee by its actions tonight.
Uh, thank you, Dan, and have-
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And have a good rest of your evening. Thank you very much. Okay, um, please let me know, raise your hand. Paul Buck, do you have?
Yeah, so very quick, John, maybe before Dan gets off. Other than my conversations earlier, I don't know that anybody else has any amendments to this. And rather than go through it paragraph by paragraph, if there are no committee members who want to make modifications to Paul's motion, then we could go right to the vote so that Dan could, could have his, his opposition recorded officially and formally.
Okay. Dan, are you still in attendance?
Never mind.
How would you like to proceed? Should we go to the second paragraph? I see we have Kathleen Holland. What, Greg?
I don't know that we need to go through it paragraph by paragraph, because I mean, like I said, if, if somebody has an amendment, just let's hear it.
Okay, all right, so I will take amendments on any, but if you could just tell us what it's on. I have Kathleen Holland and then I have Kathy Key.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing would be to elaborate on the history lessons to be the Algonquin nation as well as local history, since it was the Nipmunk that were original to this area in addition. So all of that local history, not just, um, one particular tribe. Thank you.
So where would you like, so you're making that as an amendment or just a?
Uh, just an edit really, on the history of the Algonquin people and, uh, Northborough locally. Um, or Native American people of the area. Very, just small but meaningful.
I believe Nipmunk is included under the Algonquin people.
Okay, so Ca- Kathleen Holland, you're not giving an amendment, you're just giving a suggestion for the administration as we go forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Kathy Key. So that will be do- duly noted, Kathleen? And I can see Greg is taking notes, so. Okay, Kathy Key?
Okay, so this isn't an amendment, and I guess I should have brought this up before you read this, Paul. But I just want to make it clear that even if we change the tomahawk, that people still have t-shirts, sweatshirts, all this kind of gear that all of our kids have had, they have graduated. And, and by the way, I graduated from Yanover High School, we were the Golden Warriors. So I understand changing the mascot because ours is now the Eagles. But we still have stuff that has the Warriors on it and I still wear it proudly because that's where I went to high school. So I just want to make sure that even though we're going to replace it, kids still have all this t-shirts, sweatshirts and all that kind of stuff that to Dan's point, that, you know, they shouldn't, no one should be saying anything to them for wearing that because that's exactly what they, what they know themselves as until, you know, until after we change. So as long, you know, I don't, you know, if my kids go out with a Algonquin t-shirt that has the tomahawk on it, you know, I'd be, I, I think it'd be shameful for somebody to say something even though we're changing the, um, our mascot.
Okay, so that is-
I agree.
Go ahead, Paul.
I mean, I agree with you, but I don't, I don't like, I don't know that there's anything we can put into motion like this to, to cover that, you know?
Right, and, and, and I'm not, I, I'm not asking it, but like if these kids, you know, all these kids are in school currently, everyone has this, so maybe it's going to shine that. Like, I want to make sure that no one's gonna, you know, say anything to the kids that still have this, even though we're changing the mascot. I think it should be completely understood that it's fine for them to wear what they, you know, have and that no one should have to throw out the, you know, the gear that they have because we're changing it, that's all.
So, uh, Kathy Key, I see that as a suggestion also, as we move forward to give to Greg and to Sean and, um, you know, in the education of the students to go ahead, rather than-
I mean, it, well, I, it's, it's not an amendment, but I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's fine for them to wear, you know, that out to, to school, to, you know, whatever it is.
Okay. All right, thank you. Chris Covino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I echo a lot, I echo all the sentiments that have been, uh, expressed here uh, in terms of making sure that, um, you know, we respect, um, we, we respect the fact that this has been our mascot, uh, Algonquin since inception. And, um, there was, there was no malicious intent. There was absolutely no malicious intent with this. And, um, so, I mean, I, that is absolutely important and I agree. I don't think, you know, I think it's, it's not something that could necessarily be put into a motion. Because, you know, there is that, you know, fostering a sense of school pride is, is very important. I guess I would just, my, my, it's just a question I really have, which is, um, I would assume that if we, if we vote to approve this motion, that it takes effect immediately and, um, and that includes we will no longer, that it will, they will immediately prohibit, administration will essentially immediately prohibit the production of any new gear, et cetera, et cetera. Eh, is that the, is that the case?
Uh, that's the, that's the intent, yes.
And that was my understanding also, Chris. Kathleen Plachko?
Um, yeah, so, uh, I think to Kathy Key's point, um, and first of all, I think this is a fabulous, uh, motion and I think it really reflects all the deep, deep discussions that we've had over all of the issues surrounding this very important change. But, so I think that the fact that we are not taking the route where we're just going to, you know, day one, completely change everything and throw money at it all and, uh, the fact that we recognize this is going to be a, um, a transition. And, you know, it may be, depending on budgets, it may be a slow transition. So I, I, I don't, I mean, I hope that the Algonquin community doesn't, um, uh, in the short term, you know, they're not embarrassed by the term tomahawk because it's what we've been since nineteen fifty-nine and you can't change on a dime. And I hope that the student body recognizes that fact that, that we are not erasing the whole tomahawk, uh, history and the tomahawk name from everything right away gives them license to also do the transition. Because, you know, kids have siblings that were tomahawks and so there's going to be tomahawk, uh, t-shirts and gear out there for a while. Um, and there's going to be tomahawks on school property and on school, uh, I don't know, plaques and whatever it is, um, ad infinitum, because we're not going to erase tomahawk. So hopefully that will, um, help the students transit, you know, transition. It'll help us transition, it'll help the community transition. We're, we're not just erasing it, we're, we're just transitioning.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Um, any other discussion, um?
John, can I talk, can I just add one more thing?
Yes, Kathy.
So, so to the, to Chris's point, and I, you know, uh, as far as not making anything, but if there, what, what do you do then? Like, so say uniforms for one team were being made for this year? Is, eh, are we, like, what, you know, what are we doing with that? Or like all the merchandise that's in the school store, like, are you throwing it away? Are you going to sell it still? Are you gonna, until, like, how is, and I know this is an amendment, but that being said, like, what are we doing with letterheads? You know, all the school store stuff, you, there's a lot of stuff out there right now. So is it, has anybody have a plan for how that, how it will be phased out? Are we phasing it out? Are we throwing it out? Like, what happened with it all?
Uh, would Greg or Sean Bevan like to respond to that question?
I can, I can pick up, uh, some of that, uh, question, uh, Ms. Key. So the school store hasn't been selling, uh, tomahawk branded gear this year. I'd asked over the summer because, uh, to just sell material and apparel that didn't have tomahawk, not anticipate, not anticipating that this would be the definite outcome, but I didn't want to have, uh, a scenario where we had um, material that then, uh, we could not sell. So we have not been selling tomahawk branded gear this year. Um, we've only sold gear that has the name of Algonquin and the script at letter A. Um, and, and with, um, Mr. Moserino, I asked him at the same time in August to simply order any new uniforms without the name tomahawk on it, only because that could be used for a longer period of time should a potential change happen. So it was a, a strategy we employed just in case we got to the point where we are now. Um, so I think we are a little bit ahead of where we might be otherwise if we hadn't made those decisions. But, um, there is indeed a lot of, a lot of material, um, apparel primarily at uniforms. I really think primarily you're looking at uniforms. There's not a huge amount of other items, um, that, uh, the school store, there's none, and then it's primarily uniforms after that.
Okay. Okay, um, uh, Paul Desmond, the suggestions that came from Paul Buck, is that suggestions that you're going to be making an amendment or no?
No, there's no need. I, 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 um, this was one of them. Prohibit when possible or otherwise discourage was one of his suggestions, which I incorporated before I read it into the record. And the other one, as I said, you know, it's just, eh, the school committee has carte blanche in terms of timing. You know, if we can find the money to do it sooner, that's, that's an option. If we can't, that's an option, so.
I don't either. I'm fine with the motion as it is.
Okay. All right, any other discussion of the motion on the table that was made by Paul Desmond and seconded by Paul Buck? At this time, I would like to close out the, uh, discussion and now we will take the vote of the motion on the table. I only, I will only read the first paragraph. This was a vote to accept the recommendation from Superintendent Martino and the mascot study group to retire the tomahawk as mascot for Algonquin Regional High School, which follows with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven other paragraphs. So this is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Buck?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key? Uh, Dan Kalenda is absent. Uh, Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Plachko?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It passes unanimously, uh, of the nine members that are present at the time of the vote. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, at this time, we will continue on with the agenda. The next item that we have is going back to number four under, oh, number two, legislative update. Mr. Martino?
Sure, at this, at this time, there are no legislative updates.
Okay, uh, going on to number four, under new business, COVID nineteen update. We have the screening and the CDC community of practice presentation.
Sure, so I'd like to have Mary Ellen Duggan, um, share an update on screening and also, um, her work around the CDC presentation.
Hi, everybody. It's good to be here tonight. Um, our screening program is going well. We have an increase of about two percent each week of people participating. Um, recently, um, as you all know, athletics, it is mandatory to participate in the screening, to participate in athletics. And, um, also for senior privileges, um, it has been made mandatory for that. So we have seen an uptick since, um, that was put into place with the senior privileges. But on average throughout the whole district, it's been about a two percent increase, um, all along, every week. Um, as for the CDC presentation, uh, Mr. Martino, myself and Kristen Black, Dr. Kristen Black, the Northborough Board of Health Agent, did a brief presentation on our screening program for the CDC as they are, um, looking into an ICAP program, which is a ten billion dollars that is being, um, from the federal government for all schools to, uh, take part in some kind of testing for K to twelve schools. So we just did that and we were available for questions afterwards. Um, as many of you have heard, there's, was a recent update as to the contact definition for in-school close contacts and, um, medical advisory team has, uh, met this week and has decided to go along with the D E S I and E O H S, H S recommendations to, um, that a contact in school or on the bus would be within three feet. If you were within three feet of a positive person, you would need to quarantine. But if you were within the three to six feet, you would not need to quarantine. So, um, the medical advisory team has met and looking at all of the data we have, we have quarantined upwards of close to four hundred students throughout the year. And we have had, um, one positive episode of, um, one of those contacts testing positive that we know of was an adult to student transmission. So, um, with all of that data and the recommendations from D E S I, we are, uh, and the governor's medical advisory team, we also are going along with that. And that's the update on the COVID front, if anybody has any questions.
Um, thank you, Sam, very much for your guidance and your direction and everything that you have done. As I said in my opening statement, you have educated us- As I said in my opening statement, you have educated us so much, I've learned so much from you, and the way that this whole community has come together with all of your staff, and we've always been in the forefront and ahead of every, almost every other community. So I'd like to really appreciate you for your unlimited number of hours and dedication that you have given to this effort, to make sure that we can reopen our schools and go back into five days of learning for K through 12. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan, we could never do it without our medical advisory team, who are volunteers for this job, that meet every Tuesday. And also the school nurses, I have to put out a shout out to our brand new school nurses, they joined the school nurse force this year and jumped in with both feet, and have been amazing, as Sean can testify to all that and all of the high school community.
Okay, and I have a comment, don't leave yet, because there's a comment from Sean O'Shea. Sean?
Yeah, I just have a question. What's the guidance on, now that you can walk into Walmart and buy COVID test, what's the guidance, medical advisory team, providing guidance for families on using those, or will the school accept those? Or, I'm just, that, they're now, you know, you can, you can buy them for like 10 bucks, and I don't know if that is acceptable for, you know, being released for quarantining, or for coming to school if somebody has the sniffles?
So we have only accepted PCR tests from day one, so the rapid antigen tests are not accepted in our school district.
Okay. Thank you.
And we also, when students are quarantined due to school contacts, we provide the testing for them. So we offer it, they can have a drive-through testing.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments at this time. And Mary Ellen, did you also do the CDC community of practice, or is it a separate one?
Oh, that was, just, we, we did a presentation, that was at the
Oh, you did, okay.
That Mr. Martineau, myself, and Dr. Black did, a couple of weeks ago, for the CDC, about our pool screening program.
That was the one that you did, and that was provided to educators across the whole United States, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And as I said, you're in the forefront of everything, so thank you very much.
We did include the presentation in the school committee packet. I just want to also share that Dr. Serenello was on the call as well.
Sorry, how could I, how could I forget Dr. Serenello?
Yeah, I, I saw that in the linked agenda, and it had the pictures of the medical advisory team and everything, so that's why I thought, well, maybe we're, this was going to be part of a presentation tonight, so. But that was just for our review in the linked agenda. Okay, we have another question or comment, Paul Bucka?
Well, yeah, I just, just to kind of go back, I, I really don't think we should be glossing over what I think I just heard. Just to kind of say it in, in, in my terms, the National Center for Disease Control asked Algonquin Regional High School to make a presentation to any America organization that was interested in how we handled the pandemic. Is that what you just said?
They, they asked us to be part of a presentation for our pooled screening program, yes.
I mean, I think that's terrific, and I didn't want it to get glossed over. I just wanted to kind of, a big shout out there, boy, that's, what great recognition, what terrific accomplishment, I, for the, for the entire team that was involved in this. Well, congrats.
But then, I have to apologize to Andrea, because she was probably spearheaded this, as she has Dr. Serenello. She has spearheaded this whole, us being invited by the CDC.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ellen. I don't see any other questions. Greg, any closing comments?
No, I think, just echo everyone's comments around Mary Ellen, Duggan, and her work, as well as the nursing team, they've been outstanding across, you know, also our Northborough-Southborough District, so much gratitude.
Okay, thank you. Going on then to the next agenda item under new business is approval of grants and/or donations. This is a vote by the entire committee to accept, and it is, the first one is a $5,000 donation for COVID-19 testing from Northborough Education Foundation. And Greg, was that going for the poll testing?
So that, yes, that went to our testing program, and early on in the process, we reached out to partner with NEF, and this is just another example of their willingness to support our district and partner with us to make sure that students get what they need. So we're very grateful. We did submit a letter, a thank you and appreciation on behalf of the school committee to NEF and the district already.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to accept that $5,000 donation?
Move with gratitude.
By Paul Bucka?
Second. Sean?
By Sean O'Shea? Any discussion? Roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Highland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Plachko? Kathleen Plachko?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, and myself, yes, it passes unanimously of the nine members that are present right now. We have also approval of a $500 anonymous donation to the food service program.
Keith, I'm not sure if you want to mention, again, this is a generous donation from a community member, to support our food service program and our students.
Yeah, absolutely, Greg, this is a community member that reached out to me, an offer of support to our food services program, knowing that things are not cheaper, and things are more expensive to produce and do, and, and know that that particular group was working very hard. So we're very appreciative for, for the donation, on, on behalf of the Food Services Department.
Okay, thank you, thank you Keith. And all the money helps at any time, so I appreciate the anonymous donor. Do I have a motion to accept?
Yep, I'll move it.
Move by Paul Bucka, is there a second?
Second, Sean.
Second by Sean O'Shea. Any further discussion? It's a roll call vote, Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Sure, yes.
Chris Covino?
With gratitude, yes.
Paul Desmond, good choice. Paul Desmond?
Yes.
Kathleen Highland?
I second Chris Covino's emotion.
Good. Kathy Key, appreciated?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Plachko?
Yes.
It passes unanimously with the nine members that are present, and at this time, I'd like to turn the agenda over to Superintendent Martineau for his report to the committee.
Sure, and I'll turn it over to Principal Bevan, to give his principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Martineau, can I have a screen sharing permission, please? And also, as, once I get started, if you have not seen, Brittany Burns should be in the, should be promoted, she'll be speaking shortly.
Sean, you should have screen sharing capability.
Okay, thank you.
And Brittany is being promoted.
Thank you, everyone, I just have a few updates on two quick things, and then I'm going to pass it over to our Social Studies Department Chair, Brittany Burns. So, we have an award that we've been presented just yesterday, it's the Robert H. Keen, Robert H. Keen Jr. Award, where I have the actual award here, which will be going up here in my office shortly, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that, and then I'm going to give you a brief update on how this week's return to fully in-person learning went. So first, the Robert H. Keen Jr. Award is given for our students' contribution a few years back, in the redevelopment of the historic Gale Store, for, for, which was converted into condominiums for affordable housing. The property was given by the Trinity Church, and in the room as well, Greg, I think we have Rick Leaf and Norman Corbin, if you wanted to, to bring them into the room as well, I think, if you'd like to see them and maybe hear from them momentarily, that would be great, I can tell you about their project, and then I'll show you the presentation of the award. The, the, the project that, that they built was across the street from the Northborough Library, on Main Street, and adjacent to the Trinity Church. There's a home that is 37 to 39 Main Street, it was once the Cyrus Gale General Store, I'll show you a photograph of that in a moment, and it was formally dedicated in March of 2019. And the other home, which is right next door, was dedicated the year before. Half of the project had been funded by the community, by community preservation funds, and they were converted into condominium units that are affordable housing units. Paul Rabello, the site supervisor, shared that the house is practically new, and is an estate, is a state-of-the-art building, but is inside a 200-year-old frame, and they kept the beams original of the house, and highlighted the interior of the house as a reminder of its history. And the reason why we're present, we were part of this, is that many Algonquin students, whose names are lost to history, to my understanding, were volunteers on this project, and helped do a lot of the literal heavy lifting, and figure it if heavily, heavy lifting to make this project come to life. So here are the two photographs of the two buildings back in, back in the day. On the left side, I think that's the Gale, the Gale Store, and the right side is the house. And here's what they look like today. Unfortunately, I do not have photographs of the inside, but I had the great pleasure yesterday, this is Rick Leaf on the right here with me, presenting me the award, and he's the treasurer of the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, and Norm Corbin, who I think is in our audience tonight, is the chair of the Northborough Historic Commission, which is part of the Northborough Town Administration. Mr. Leaf had explained to me that this was really a true partnership between the several agencies and groups, including Algonquin and Algonquin students, but also Assabett Valley students, to make this project really come to life. So it's, it's a real point of pride for our school, and accepting this award was a real pleasure, and meeting Rick was a pleasure as well. So I don't know if Rick and Norm are in the audience, or if they are coming to the, into the room, Greg, or if you'd like to meet a person?
They are both in the audience.
So there's Rick, I see.
Hello? Yeah, hi. You know, just briefly, I guess, if members of the committee or the public that may still be attending, I haven't seen the award, I'd just like to sort of read the award that was given by Preservation Massachusetts. It says Preservation Massachusetts is honored to present the Robert H. Keen Jr. Award to the redevelopment of the historic Gale Store for affordable housing in Northborough, in recognition of projects that meld collaborative partnerships with creative and cutting-edge ideas for the rehabilitation and active reuse of historic buildings. Preservation Massachusetts recognizes the exemplary efforts of Habitat for Humanity, Metro West Greater Worcester, the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, Trinity Church, the town of Northborough, Assabett Valley Regional Technical High School, Algonquin Regional High School, and their dedicated team members. This award was granted on October 22, 2020. I think that what's important to realize here is that it was quite a community effort. The buildings were originally owned by Trinity Church, they came to the Affordable Housing Corporation late in 2015, asked if we would have an interest in acquiring the homes from them, and turning them into affordable housing. We don't have the development capability ourselves, but we had been talking to Habitat for Humanity about a joint partnership with them to do a project such as this. Habitat for Humanity was very interested in the project. We were able to get some pro bono engineering and architectural work done, to get an idea of the scope of the work that we needed to be done, and once we understood the price, basically, the town of Northborough, through its Community Preservation Commission, approved funding 50% of the project, which included the purchase of the two homes from Trinity Church, as well as a contribution towards the renovation. And then Habitat for Humanity, in their infinite ability to gain volunteer support, went out and lined up volunteers across the community. Trinity Church members worked on the project, students from Algonquin worked on the project, especially on the exterior of the homes, they did a lot of work on the exterior insulation, as well as the siding. And the students from Assabett Valley, in the smaller of the two buildings, the Assabett Valley students did all of the carpentry, all of the electrical work, and all of the HVAC work in the small house, and then did finish work on the Gale General Store. So for the Assabett Valley students, was a real opportunity to get out of the classroom and put to practice things they were learning in their technical background they were being trained in. So really, having all of these organizations working together to make this happen, I think, was a great community effort. And besides all of that, Habitat provides lunch for all the volunteers, and many restaurants and cafes, and sandwich shops in town donated food over the course of two years for the volunteers for lunch every day. Their names aren't on this list, but they were also very much involved in the project. So it was really a great combination of community effort, as well as a wonderful reuse of the property. And I just want to let Norm speak for a minute about the actual historic value of that Gale General Store. Go ahead, Norm.
All right, I assume everybody can hear me? What I want to highlight really is, is I'm going to highlight the Gale family, who owned the store, both Captain Cyrus Gale and his son Cyrus Gale Jr. Reason I want to highlight them is they were very prominent and influential in Northborough throughout the 1800s. Captain Gale, he moved to Northborough in 1813, he acquired a 200-acre farm, and his farm produced produce, plus milk and butter, and all of this was sold at his store on Main Street, the building that was restored. He was also a founder of the Northborough Bank in 1854, he was a philanthropist, he was one of the first benefactors for the Northborough Free Library, and the founder of the Gale Fund. The Gale Fund was a town fund to help the poor. His son followed in his father's footsteps, he was also prominent and influential in the town. He donated Assabett Park as a gift, and he also funded the building, the Northborough Free Library, the building that the old, the antique building that's part of the library today. So the Gales have been a real instrumental part of the town's history, and I thought I'd take this opportunity to make sure everybody recognized them for that. And on a completely side note, I really was interested in the discussion we had, you had this evening regarding the tomahawk, the tomahawk for the, for the high school. I grew up in Salem, Massachusetts, our mascot was a witch. Think about a controversial mascot down the road. I hope Salem comes to its recognition that the witch is really not the right mascot long-term. But, thank you very much, I, I'm glad I was able to listen in this evening.
I just want to add one more thing before we close our part of the presentation. In the Gale Store, to do that renovation, the house had to be completely gutted internally. And when some of the walls were taken down, we actually found handwritten invoices and inventory lists handwritten by Cyrus Gale, some dated back to 1814, and some were in still very good readable condition. We contacted the Northbrook Historical Society, they've come over, and they preserve those things, and those are now on display for people to see in historic society buildings. So that was kind of a, an additional kind of surprise that we found, once they took the walls down in there. So you never know, when you start working in a building that's over 200 years old, what you're going to find, but that was very interesting for us, especially to find some of them in really excellent condition, and to see Cyrus's actual handwriting in front of us, it was, it was quite startling.
Well, thank you, Mr. Leaf and Mr. Corbin, it was a pleasure to meet you, Rick, and, and Norman, meeting you virtually here is a pleasure as well, and thank you for your hard work to make this project happen, and it sounds like our students had something to do with it, and I'm proud of that for our community, so thank you. At this time, I want to talk a little bit about, about what reopening has looked like, and then I'm going to pass it along to Ms. Burns. So, we reopened on Monday to fully in-person learning for all of our students, except for students who are remaining in the standalone remote program, which is about 5% of our students, that number's about 70 to 75 students currently. I will kind of, I've pieced this into about three chunks. The first part is the morning, our seniors, unbeknownst to me, and in an entirely unsanctioned way, showed up to school at about 6:00 or 6:30 to have an impromptu breakfast in the parking lot, to celebrate the reopening of school, which was actually pretty charming. They decorated the front walkway, here's what you see on the right-hand side, and they did that on the other entrance as well, they played lawn games in the parking lot, they had Dunkin' Donuts, and they gave us our first challenges of keeping students separated as best as possible. We started to get a sense for what that was like, but honestly, it was really a lovely way to start the day, and the kids really enjoyed themselves. And then, once the bell rang, they went into the building and, and we began the day. So classrooms, I, on the left side, classrooms look like they, they've always looked, in really conventional ways, students are sitting in Students are sitting in, in, you know, in kind of the same arrangements that they've had in a long time for kind of the history of, of education in a lot of ways. So our rooms are all set with desks at a minimum, a minimum of three feet apart from seat edge to seat edge. So all students are more than three feet from each other, and this is what a classroom looks like. And it's probably similar to, to what your child has, has had in their time growing through the, the, you know, our system. Teachers are responding and, and planning activities that are a little bit closer to what they may have been used to. So this is kind of like restoring this muscle memory that we've all had to, to have the, the experience teachers have, have done for their entire careers. And it's been a success. Kids, I'll tell you a little bit about the themes that we're hearing. On the right-hand side, I have, this is our first in-person staff meeting, which we conducted in, in really in two different ways. We did it in the cafeteria. Teachers were six feet apart, and desks, they were doing an exercise here to help me identify some of the, the things that worked really well for that day. This is at the end of the day on Monday, and things that didn't work so well that we needed to tweak. The conclusions were that, on, on balance, things worked generally pretty well, and the, the things that needed work were primarily just tweaking, needed to be tweaked. We had some staff members that chose, and I gave this as an option, and I fully supported. If they didn't care to join in person, they were able to attend that meeting virtually, which allowed me to try out some of the technology we've been asking teachers to employ, which is something called an owl, which I will spare you from trying to explain. But it is basically the ability to use audio and visual to engage outside learners. Students are really enjoying the social aspects of school and also the extracurricular aspects of schools. The school is returning in a lot of ways more to normal. The biggest challenge for every school in returning to fully in-person learning, really, the driver for much of our decisions unfortunately, is how do you feed students six feet apart with limited space? Luckily, our school has a lot of space generally, and also kids are really enjoying using our outdoor space, and it's become a quite popular place to, to sit and eat. And this was just this afternoon, students who, this is what it kind of looks like on most days, and this week with the weather was okay. We had a lot of students taking us up on eating outdoors, which is really a very safe way, as Mary Ellen tells me, for students to, to eat their lunch. We also have our cafeteria set up at six feet apart, and we also have the B gym set up at six feet apart. And in this, in the case of inclement, inclement weather, we would have our, not our B gym, I'm sorry, our C gym is, is set up for, for lunch. Our B gym would be used, although there's no furniture there, students could sit and eat in the same way they, they primarily do here in this picture on the right. On the left-hand side, you see some of our athletics started on Monday, while all of our athletics for spring sports four, it's our fourth season of the year, started, and that included, and I apologize if I forget some, but we have boys volleyball. On the bottom left, we have girls rugby on the, on the middle picture. We have a boys rugby, we have lacrosse, we have wrestling, we have track, tennis. It's really, a really robust athletics program, and I cannot say enough about Mike Moserino and the job he's done this year. He's been outstanding in keeping kids engaged and doing the right thing. You can't really see it so well, but in this photo on the top left, that's Mr. Moserino explaining to the students the importance of following our, our COVID protocols, that in doing so, we've been able to keep kids safe, healthy, and participating in athletics. So just a few words about what, what it looked like over the course of the week. Here's some data. We welcomed back roughly twelve hundred and seventy-five students into the building. That was the first time we had anywhere near that number since March of last year. We also, in addition, have two hundred and twenty-five staff members. The building was about ninety-five percent of its regular capacity on a regular day. And, you know, that change was something that was notable for those first couple of hours. And then I think some of the, the novelty of that and the newness of that has worn off, and kids are into a rhythm. That's been my observation, and, and I will check in with kids to get more information on that, but that's been my sense. The key changes are to, we've had to, in order to feed students six, six feet apart, we needed to add a lunch block, so that lunch block is longer than it's been in the past, and that will stay the same way through the end of the year. And also, I, in responding to student feedback about their concerns, I've asked teachers to not assign homework this week, to give students a chance to build up stamina, to, to adjust their kind of work habits and their sleep habits. And then next week, we'll start to, to increase the demands on students, and teachers have been great about that. AP classes, and I think everyone understands this, AP exams are coming up in the next few weeks. So unfortunately, for AP students, that's a demanding course load if you're taking even a single AP class, and there is homework associated with that. The focus we, I've asked teachers to, to, to pay close attention to this week was to build their classroom culture, while we also simultaneously make the school building a, a warm and inviting one. And they provided a lot of different ways that was happening. So we had our Take Action Club play music during passing time. That drew kind of mixed reviews, I would say, and, and some of those were because of our sound system isn't exactly prepared for it, and some of it was because, because it was kind of disruptive to some of our separate special education programs. However, it was lovely for the day that we had it, and, and I think it was something we learned was a nice try, but maybe not a permanent. It just hasn't been a permanent installation for us. We've done some decorating around the building. We'll be doing more later in the week. Additionally, classrooms, teachers were doing all kinds of different activities to just kind of welcome students back and cohere the cohort A and cohort B. Some of our takeaways, and I'll just end on this, is that students and staff are still building the stamina they're going to need to, to go from seven twenty to, to two o'clock. I had one student say to me, he's been going to bed at two AM for about a year, and last night he went to bed at ten PM. And he, you know, that's the kind of thing we're hearing from kids, is that they are kind of getting back into, into a game shape for being an everyday student, and that's not a surprise. I think the same is true for many of our teachers. I really should have put the next bullet at the top. The energy and enthusiasm has been very high. Kids are really excited to be back. We heard that a lot. We heard a lot of teachers indicate to us that there was a, that kind of buzz at the beginning of a classroom that I think in a regular year might be a little bit irksome to teachers, but it was the kind of like hum and buzz and social excitement that, that you get on the first day of school. But here we are on the hundred and fortieth day of school. So that was something that was worth noting. I noticed, and this I think is consistent with what we knew, is that there was some trepidation and some apprehension for kids in that first class. You could kind of tell the tension about kids. They hadn't sat next to others three feet apart. And now here, they were going to be doing it all day and for the next several weeks. But I think that's starting to reduce over time, which is consistent with what we know about how students respond to, to new stimulus. So that, that was something we noticed, and I think we're starting to see them get back into, into the swing of things, which is they're getting back into this, getting back to normal, frankly. It's, it's more normal for the school experience. Some of the things we tried have, have continued to work. The lunch spacing and the four lunch, lunch blocks seem to be working well, and some plans didn't work perfectly. So the music during passing time, we took, took some feedback on that, and, you know, it's not something we're going to be capable of keeping and doing. But there were no huge flaws that required major overhauls, and I think generally speaking, it's been a success. So we're really happy with it. I can tell you, I've not been in this building for ten years, and being back to the building where we're almost at full capacity has been really great. And seeing kids, you know, enjoying learning, not that they weren't before, but some of the restrictions falling away have really restored school to a more enjoyable experience, frankly. And then the afternoon sports was just kind of the, the cream on top. So it was really, a really lovely start to this last chapter of the year. So I'm happy to answer questions, but that's just kind of a quick overview of how the year has gone so far in this reopening phase.
Principal Bevan, I have one question. Kathleen Holland.
I think you could well anticipate my interest in the music that was used in the hallways and what the responses were from the children in the substandard classrooms. Was it a distraction, an attraction, or was it causing more STEM behaviors and issues related like that? And, and what the criteria was for the selection?
Though, I knew you'd be asking the music questions, Ms. Allen. So the, the, the students that, that were most impacted are not, not students who travel the hallways during breaks, so they don't really manage their day during, in, in our kind of Dell schedule kind of way. And some of the students who are at home, who are virtual, were, were kind of finding that the, the music being pumped through being a real distraction, and these are students who really struggle, you know, in, in a regular school environment. And this was just kind of a curveball that they weren't prepared for. So, and honestly, our, our audio system isn't really prepared to, to pump music through. We had to kind of hold up a, a speaker to like the phone, you know. It was, we didn't have really a hardwired way of doing it well. We tested out a few different ways of doing it. As I explained to Ms. Burns, that Taylor Swift sounds great any way you put it, but even Taylor Swift's music didn't sound great over the, over the speakers. The students of the Take Action Committee had created a playlist on Spotify that they had kind of worked together on creating, and what we've done is share that out to students that, to kind of mark that as the, the playlist, that if they want to kind of, kind of listen along, it's the playlist created for the reopening of the school that would have been throughout the course of the week. So the students have access to that, and teachers can play that if they want to during test time if they like.
Well, I could see a bad signal to noise ratio would, would be there, but I'm also wondering what the purpose was. And I'd be glad to have a conversation with you, because this can be very helpful, and it's, of course, very nuanced, and it's my wheelhouse. So glad to offer that if you wish to pursue it.
Yeah, I may take you up on that. I, I will give the kids credit when we ask kids, you know, what they were thinking about, about the reopening of school. They worried about, what are they hopeful for? We got that suggestion many times. Could we have music during passing time? And we have a seven-minute passing time currently, and that, I thought, you know, a three or, three to four minute song in between, you know, could be, was pretty harmless, and it was well received, but I just, it just, I don't think was the kind of thing we can do in perpetuity. But I'd be happy to pick your brain about it. I think there's probably real benefits that are well understood by you more than me. So I'd love to hear, hear about that.
Would love to be with you. Thank you.
So this, unless there are, are there any other questions?
Yes, we do. We have one from Paul Desmond.
Actually, just a quick comment from, from my focus group of two here at home. I would agree that when you said the energy was high, I think I totally agree. They've been happier this week than I've seen in quite some time. And by the way, the, the event on Monday, I believe, was called Senior Sunrise. And I got my daughter out of the house at something like five forty-five, which I still can't quite comprehend. Anyway, good work.
I will say, one of the things that was a driver for why the kids got there so early was seniors in cohort A who were used to parking in certain spots that thought of them as their own. Thought of the seniors in cohort B who parked in that same spot all year. There was kind of a competitive energy to make sure that they didn't use that spot. And I had at least one student who dropped his car off the night before in a that he'd get there, and he said he was a little worried that he'd get towed, and he was happy to see that it happened. So, I mean, these are nice things to be sorting out, and it was really kind of, you know, it's, it's a lot more fun than sorting out the, the, the real restrictive environment that we've been living under. And, and a reminder that kids really do love coming to school and, and our school in particular. So that's been great.
Sean, thank you for making it such a warm and welcoming place for all the students, and also to make it fun and to give a lot of enthusiasm. And I was glad to see your report. Also, it was a nice little bonus to see that only AP courses had homework this week, or last week, and to get the kids, you know, adjusted to it this week. So thank you very much, and to the staff. Okay, I don't think that-
Very popular this week, the no homework thing. Kids have asked me if I can extend that through the rest of the year, and I told them I can.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, there were no other questions, so I will turn it over to you again.
Great. At this time, I'm gonna, I would like to have, I'd like to introduce Brittany Burns, who is our Social Studies Department Chair and a wonderful colleague and a terrific leader of, of our, one of our wonderful departments here. Just going to give you an update on how the year is going and, and the direction of the department. I will let you, can I share to you? Greg, can you share Ms. Burns's privileges?
Well, thank you so much, everyone. I feel like it's a little fortuitous. We've been talking so much about the history of the school and the towns that we would have the Social Studies Department presentation tonight. I, at the risk of offending some of my colleagues here, I have to say that I think Social Studies teachers have the best job in education right now, but also one of the hardest. I think we're in a unique position. In many ways, we're this bridge between the academic world and the real world for students. And especially with things that have been going on in our country and around the world in the last few years, we've had a lot of opportunities to really reflect on our curriculum, on what we teach. And I think it's been a tremendous opportunity for growth for our department. I'm so proud of the work that we do. I'm surrounded by some really talented, dedicated teachers who do really incredible work. And I'm really excited to share with you some of the ways that we have kind of pushed ourselves and, and grown over the last couple of years. So I'll start by introducing the team. I thought it was a little much to ask everyone to join us in person tonight. So in keeping with our virtual theme this year, our department has fifteen members, most of whom have been teaching for a decade or more. I think that speaks to the dedication of this group and how passionate they are about the students in this community. This year, we had one new addition. Mrs. Braun was out on maternity leave this year with her second baby. She's a Southborough resident, so she's doing her part to keep up our future enrollments. And joining us was Ms. LaFerrier, who has been an incredible addition to our department. We were really lucky to find her. But this has been the team that we've carried forth with this year. They have been flexible and adapted in some really exciting ways that I'm lucky to tell you about. So the last time that I was here with all of you in the library, it was the first year of a three-year rollout on the new frameworks from the state of Massachusetts. So Massachusetts redid its Social Studies curriculum in two thousand and eighteen, and we have been hard at work all across the district, K through twelve, in implementing and realigning our curriculum to these new standards. I am excited to say that this year is the final year of that rollout at the high school. So as you see here from our program of studies, our ninth and tenth graders engage in US History I and II aligned with those new frameworks. And then the real shift happened in our eleventh grade, which used to be a World History II course and is now a World History Survey course. The differences are not too great, but basically, we cover a greater swath of world history as the eighth grade course has switched to a government course. I also want to take a little bit of time to just kind of give a shout out to our elective course teachers. You can see here, this list has a variety of really rich and high-quality social science electives. And I think that these keep our enrollment really high in our department. Kids are itching to take these. We are filling courses constantly. And I think students have a lot of opportunities to learn about all different aspects of social science, of community, from psychology and sociology to really specific historical courses, to criminal justice. And I think this speaks to the passion and dedication of the teachers in our department as well, who worked really hard to become experts in so many of these different areas. So thinking about this year and talking about hybrid and remote learning, I thought this was kind of an interesting time to be discussing it, because now we're three days into our reopening fully and kind of moving away from that model. So I thought I would focus on a couple of areas that I think are things that we learned and grew and, and areas we grew in this year that will carry forward through the end of the year and hopefully in the future. It was a challenge to switch to this model. I think every educator would say that. But I think we're also walking away with some really exciting tools and some new perspectives that we maybe wouldn't have come to as quickly without the circumstances of this year. These include this adaptation to online learning. We, as a department, were very, we're using Canvas a lot before the pandemic, but I think that we really grew as a department in our use of it. We were very lucky in March of two thousand and twenty, seven days exactly before school went out, that one of our department members taught all of us how to use this program, Canvas Studio, which is an internal video building app that has allowed us to videotape classroom experiences and lectures and do all kinds of things. And it just so happened that he ran, Mr. Kellett ran this PD for us a week before. None of us could have imagined how much we would rely on this program afterward. And it has really become a school-wide program. Mr. Bevan has used it. You all, I'm sure, at some point have seen videos. But I think what's been really exciting about this is now as we move back into the classroom, we're thinking about ways that we can use this technology in person, how we can use these videos and this learning platform to help students who perhaps are absent or to, you know, add enrichment and other opportunities for students to learn beyond just what we're doing in the classroom. We've also really pushed our thinking on textbooks. That was a, a challenge for us this year. And most of our classes shifted to digital versions. Some new books- Um, and most of our classes shifted to digital versions, um, some new books, some um, digital versions of older books that we had already been using. But I think what it's really pushed us to do is, is think more about the accessibility of our resources. Right now, we're exploring discovery education along with the middle schools. But really thinking about resources that offer us more opportunities in terms of differentiation, adapting reading level, engaging English language learners and multimedia experiences. Um, and so that has been one benefit I think we'll really walk away with. We also have had the chance for the first time to um, learn about live streaming courses. We have um, live streaming sections of all of our required courses. And additionally, our department is offering five different electives right now to students in the SART program. So students who are still learning from home, um, actually live stream into classrooms. Uh, they can take AP Government, Holocaust and Human Behavior, Public Speaking, a variety of different options that allow them to engage with their peers who are in school as well. Um, and I think we've learned a lot about teaching and about thinking, you know, about the challenges of teaching students who are right in front of you and also at home. But I think some of those technologies and options will be things that we'll continue to use in the future. Um, and then the last one, the one I think in many ways I'm the most proud of, has been kind of our reframing of assessment. We've really had to think as educators a little bit differently about how we would assess students, particularly when we were in hybrid learning. This includes thinking about the philosophy of assessment, about um, ways to make it digital or, and accessible for students. And I'm really proud to say that the thinking and kind of creativity that teachers in my department did um, throughout the year, I think had an impact. We did an assessment for faculty, pardon me, a PD for faculty on assessment. Um, and four of the teachers in the department led sessions for other teachers in the school on various aspects. So these are all, I think, elements of this year that, you know, while we maybe didn't see it coming, I think we'll really walk away with some, some benefits and some areas um, that we'll continue to grow in. The last thing I really want to focus on um, has been, I think, a key focus for our work over the last two years. And that's connected to the second objective of the strategic plan, which is equity of opportunity. Um, you are all very familiar with this plan, so I won't go through, through the details of this. But I think as a department, um, and the opportunity that both the pandemic and our, our shift in the way that we were teaching, as well as the new frameworks, has really given us a chance to work together um, and think more about equity of opportunity for students in social studies. And so we, over the past two years, have really approached this in kind of two pillars. The first is through access. When I saw you last time, we were just in the first year of rolling out our unleveled US History One class for freshmen. Um, and this model has really pushed us to think about the leveling of courses and what that means for students and accessibility to really high-level rigorous curriculum. Um, as a department, we have a philosophy of open AP access. And so what we mean by that is that we do not have any grade, grade or level prerequisites for students to take our advanced placement classes. And we really have been thinking about the success of both of those programs, about how when we bring kids together, um, of all levels, the success we see across the board, right? Students learning from each other. Um, and so we made a shift this year. We decided to offer all of our elective courses at the honors level only. Our belief was that students who are interested in the, in the content of the electives, especially because our electives are so specific, should have the opportunity to, to take an honors class, even if they've never taken one before. But if they show a keen interest, for example, in sociology or criminal justice, we really wanted to open the door to give them this chance to see what an honors level course would be like in an area that they were really enthusiastic about and engaged in. Um, and so far, you know, we really have anecdotal evidence at this point because grades aren't finalized for the year. But teachers have reported this has been really successful and as a department, we decided to continue the same approach next year. The other kind of side of this approach to equity has also been equity of representation. So one of the themes that we've been working on as a district this year, um, with Roto Web, Web through our culturally responsive teaching, has been this idea of windows and mirrors and really challenging ourselves as educators to think about who is represented in our curriculum and where do students see themselves and where do they have opportunities to learn about others? And so we've really challenged ourselves, I think, as a department to expand these windows and mirrors across our curriculum and especially focusing on our three required courses that every Algonquin student will experience. So in US One and Two, for example, as we have been aligning ourselves to the new frameworks and kind of re, uh, reimagining our entire courses, we've also been looking for opportunities to include more voices of people of color, of women, of, of women, of other groups, um, and expand those experiences. And not just in kind of surface level ways. We're looking for ways to really kind of deeply dive in to the stories of all of the people who make up the American story and US history. So two specific examples of that, in the US One course, all of the freshmen this year, for the first time, read the narrative of Frederick Douglass together. So every ninth grade student um, in our unit about slavery, read that firsthand experience and engaged in some really, I think, powerful uh, lessons and discussions around that. In US History Two, the sophomores adopted Farewell to Manzanar, which is a memoir of a young girl who grows up in um, a Japanese internment camp during World War Two. And we focused our World War Two unit on this question of what does it mean to be an American? And how do times of conflict and war impact the way that we treat each other as American citizens? Uh, the US Two team also wrote a grant this year to incorporate uh, the graphic novel March by John Lewis about the March on Selma. Um, but these are just starts. We are really trying to challenge ourselves to see how we can improve this experience for students and give students the opportunity to really see as many voices as possible and as many stories as possible. And finally, um, included in this has been our adaptation of the Civic Action Project. So this was a law that was passed in twenty nineteen in the state legislature that mandated a civic action project for all students in high school as a graduation requirement. Um, as a department, we decided to incorporate this as the Capstone Project in our World History Course, which is the last required course that students have. So we have envisioned this project as an opportunity for students after they've gone through um, our entire social studies curriculum to really think on a global level um, about the needs of the future. And so we have developed a project that centers around the sixteen um, Sustainable Development Goals from the United Nations that engages students in deep research, identifying of particular issues and then developing um, action plans to try to address those issues. So we are gonna launch it across all of our world history courses, all eleventh graders this year. Um, and next year, we're, we'll add on to it. We're hoping at some point to include a community night where students can share out their projects. And right now, we're looking at ways to do that digitally, but we're really excited and I think we're very unique um, in the state for choosing to put this in a world history course in that, you know, a global project is a, a much bigger and broader thing to tackle than, than some of the local ones. So I'm really excited about the work that's being done there. So lastly, I think just looking ahead for the Social Studies Department, um, I think our three main goals are outlined here. To continue this focus on equity, um, continue evaluating the resources and textbooks that we're using with students and finding more opportunities, both for professional development, but for inclusivity, um, and to expand these windows and mirrors. Um, we also are looking to expand collaboration. We've had the opportunity to work in professional learning communities this year. Specifically, all of our US One and Two teachers have been working together in a team, which has been fantastic for vertical alignment with ninth and tenth grade and, and expanding our vision. We've also had the opportunity to work with the eighth grade teachers at the middle school and that's something we really want to continue to expand moving forward. Um, and then finally, as, you know, we wrap up this year, we will complete this alignment to the new frameworks and launch the Civic Action Project and we're really excited um, to kind of finalize that work and see how we can continue to improve it. So I think at this point, I will stop sharing and open it up to any questions or comments. Thank you so much.
Brittany, I'd like to thank you uh, for all your hard work and this wonderful presentation that you gave to us today. And, and to see that you're into, as you said from the last time that you're with us, the new three-year plan that you're in. And also like to see the connection that you're making to the strategic, strategic plan of twenty twenty-six. Thank you very much. Um, I have three questions so far from board members. Uh, first will be Kathleen Holland, then Karen Ayers and Kathleen Palczko. Kathleen Holland, you're up first.
Hi, Ms. Burns. No wonder my daughter admires you so very much. Um, I can really see that. I love your enthusiasm and the ability that you've had as a group to advance. And I'm wondering if the additional faculty development time that you've had this year was a notable contribution to that?
Yes, I mean, I think any, any teacher will tell you the more time we have to work together, the better. I think a really amazing thing's happen when we're given that time and, um, and I, I'll say that we use it. I think sometimes it can be a little mysterious what happens in professional development sessions, but um, when given the opportunity to get together, we've had some really great opportunities. We've had some fantastic um, presentations this year. And just in the last PD session, uh, we had time to sit as a, as a team. I mean, I can speak to the US History Team. We went through our entire civil rights unit point by point, um, using a template that, that we had been provided to kind of analyze representation. And we revamped not only the entire unit, but wrote a grant and designed a project. And it was like, you know, I, you can't get more bang for your buck in a single day than something like that. So it was really exciting.
Well said. I, I love the light in your eyes about it. And the variety of things that you had, including positive psychology, what an incredible course that must have been to be able to be enrolled in during this time when the topics are optimism and resilience. Um, I think that that, that the lessons from that course really uh, would be lovely to spread. The Civil Action Project, I'm just very excited about that. You know, when you look at what Miriam Ibrahim uh, has offered and Sarah Said, um, in Tonight's Vote was really, had a lot to do with them, Catherine Zeta as well, um, to get students activated. I think there are a lot of local possibilities. It's just one woman's opinion. And then lastly, I'd like to say they're concerned about the reliance on digital reading only because of the research related to skim and decreased comprehension. And I'm just wondering uh, about kind of the long arm of that plan. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, I think to be clear, we don't have any intention of entirely going digital. But I think what we're looking at are some of these resources that offer us the opportunity, both to have, in some cases, print versions, but additional resources for students to have things read aloud to them, um, some of those supplementary materials. But I, I will say we are in a way, a department in any of our, our three required courses that are, are textbook-driven. I would say that we are textbook accessorized. We use those um, to, you know, to add to that experience, but certainly not as the core of any, any experience.
That's great. I was really disappointed when this research started coming out because this seemed like a logical, eco-positive choice, um, as well as affordable for a district. And, and I've been quite disappointed. So bravo for considering it an accessory. Thank you again.
Uh, thank you, Kathleen. And uh, next, uh, Karen Ayers.
Thank you. Brittany, um, this was amazing and I just wanna, I just wanna say that I think when uh, Desi redid the frameworks, I mean, you couldn't have put a, a more positive, I mean, this is exactly what they had in mind. And uh, I just wanted to say, job well done. I mean, everything that I think the, the district has been working on as far as the portrait of the graduate and the equity and the unleveling and the open access for AP is something that I find um, extremely um, heartening and, and I think that's wonderful. Um, and I love the Women in History elective. And um, yeah, I just wanted to say, great job. You should be proud. All of the, all of your department. Nice job.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Karen. Uh, next is Kathleen Palczko.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Brittany. Fantastic presentation. I, I think that social studies uh, gets short shrift in the academic high school world because there's so much um, emphasis on reading and writing and arithmetic. But um, it's so important and it's so nice to have somebody who's so enthusiastic at the helm of that department. So thank you. And also, uh, because there's so much emphasis, I guess, on the, you know, the math and the science and, and English and MCAS and stuff. But when my kids went through, all of their electives were in social studies. Like, they were all in the social studies department because that's, I think, what um, you know, what gives them a break from what they have to do. And they can actually, you know, really sort of expand their horizons and, and get to learn about stuff that they want to learn about. So thank you for being so uh, so adamant about, you know, creating and providing um, uh, just different, you know, alternatives for them, options for them. I have a very quick, easy question for you. What was the name of the book that sophomores are reading? Farewell to?
Uh, Farewell to Manzanar.
Manzanar?
Manzanar, yep.
Okay. Don't Google farewell to Zanzibar.
No, it is not that.
Manz, okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Kathleen. Um, Paul Bucka?
Thanks, Joan. And Brittany, a great job. They probably told you to expect a question like this from me. You kind of opened the door when you mentioned how well-received your electives are and how filled they are with kids. And so, uh, you know, a question would be, you know, is it possible that kids are leaving Algonquin, graduated from Algonquin and not being able to take the courses that they'd like to within your organization because of, I don't know, aposty of, of teachers or too few opportunities to take those classes that, those electives that you fill? Here's, you know, from a budgeting point of view, I kind of like to ask questions around that of all the department heads when they come through. I'm sure someone prepped you for it, but-
Well, it's not my first time. I, uh, no, I think we are very intentional in the way that we do scheduling and how we determine the number of sections to try um, to avoid that exact situation. I mean, students always have to make choices because there's a limited number of, of periods in a day. But actually, that, that point also lends itself to one of our, one of our key reasons for deciding to go with all honors level electives. Um, one of the struggles that we had was we would have sometimes very low numbers in particular CP courses. And so then we were faced with this decision of, of running a small course or not running another one. And opening that up actually in all honors has, has expanded the number of students that get to take electives and access that way. So that's been a, a positive spin. Uh, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it. Nice job.
Thanks.
Okay, um, Brittany, I don't see any other questions from board members and it looks like you're still in your classroom.
I'm just spending the night tonight.
I was gonna say, gee, wow, you must just pull out a sleeping bag and just stay there overnight. You know, going on Paul's question, are there any classes that you're hitting the limit with and that students are turned away from?
Um, I mean, we certainly are maxed out in some of our AP courses and we, we do have larger class sizes. I think that's something that Mr. Bevan and I have talked about, you know, back and forth regarding budgeting and, and those kinds of things. But I, I think we are able to offer, we prioritize seniors for our AP classes. So sometimes students, for example, in AP Psychology, if we have too many signups for juniors, those students will have the opportunity to take it as seniors and we make sure that we have enough seats for every senior who signs up to take the course. So it doesn't always necessarily work out in the way maybe a student had planned in their schedule, but we do prioritize that um, to make sure that, that they're getting in at their last chance at the very least.
And I will add, um, I hesitate to add that uh, Brittany's, uh, the, the Social Studies Department has the highest class sizes in the building and we're well aware of it. Um, and we are in a period where our cla, our graduating class sizes are shrinking a bit. So I think that will, uh, will provide some relief. But if we were to encounter, uh, you know, an extra um, section or two by way of retirement or attrition in other areas, it would be a place we, I would look first to add and Brittany knows that and um, you know, it's certainly top of our mind.
Okay. And one question, just in one subject area, which is social studies, but then for the MCAS testing, is there a component that is gonna be tested in social studies between now and June? But then for the MCAS testing, is there a component that is going to be tested in Social Studies between now and June?
That is the million dollar social question right now. Not this year, there definitely won't be. There is a potential eighth grade MCAS for Social Studies that was the rollout was delayed. And the state has not made any official determinations yet for the high school level.
Okay. So there won't be any MCAS for?
Certainly not this year.
Okay. You get a break.
Talking about that for about 15 years uninterrupted, not pulled the trigger on an MCAS for Social Studies, which is fine by us because, you know, I don't know that kids need a more standardized testing and our students are leaving Algonquin with a really comprehensive understanding of Social Studies and History.
Yeah. And in many ways, I think the Civic Action Project is a much better assessment of of students' knowledge and skills in our subject area.
Okay. Thank you very much. And please give our regards and our thanks to all the teachers under your direction in Social Studies Department. Thank you.
I will. Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Going on, turning it back to Mr. Bevan for enrollments?
That concludes my principal's report.
Okay.
Also echo Mr. Principal Bevan's remarks around Brittany's leadership and the department's work around history and social science. And also, Brittany's not only been a leader at Algonquin, but also she's really helped lead the history and social science work K through eight in her spare time. So thank you, Brittany, and excellent presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Brittany, do you want to give an update on enrollments?
I would love to be demoted to a participant, please.
Very diplomatic.
All right, enrollments, as of 4/14, the document's in your packet. We remain at 1350, which is one less from the last report that was shared with the committee. Also in your packet, Becky will review the FY21 monthly general fund expenditure report, the COVID-19 financial impact, as well as the FY21 statement of revenue. And I will turn it over to Becky.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as we close in on the final months of FY21, the bit budget picture is becoming a bit more clear. As of 3/31/2021, we had $416,476 remaining on the bottom line, or 1.73% remaining. In comparing this report to where we were last year at this time, we had $297,308 or 1.25% remaining on the bottom line. The finance team is working very closely with the high school administration and also department directors to close out fiscal year 2021. I can't believe that there are only really, as of today, about two months left in the year. And so Sean and his team have been great to work with for finalizing all expenditures for this fiscal year. And if there are any questions on the monthly general fund report?
I do not see any at this time, but I would like to entertain a motion to approve the monthly general fund expenditure report as of March 31, 2021, until audited.
Moved.
Moved by Paul Bucka, second?
Second.
Second.
Who was the second? Sean?
Paul.
I think it was Paul.
Paul Desmond. Okay, thank you. So motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself. It passes unanimously the nine members, nine members that are present.
Okay. So moving on to the COVID-19 Financial Impact Report. I have prioritized or I've moved around the grant funds that we have received or we are about to receive just a little bit. The top three are the ones that we are really focused on this year as those are the funds that do need to be expended prior to the end of the fiscal year. The school reopening grant and the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant were extended through the CARES Act until the end of calendar year 2021. However, Desi has asked all schools to expend those by June 30, especially since they were intended for the reopening of schools. So at next month's meeting, I will provide the committee with an overview of how those funds were fully expended, including the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund as well. In terms of our expenses, we really are trending according to where we had predicted. The the two areas, I think that I have mentioned previously, where we are under what our projections were are our teacher substitutes and our nurse substitutes. The nurse substitutes, not as much as the teacher substitutes. However, we have seen some increases in our technology this year, more than we had anticipated. And then I will also say that the PPE number that I have presented here tonight does include some testing that will be moved because we have also been informed that we are the recipient of a grant for some of the screening that we are doing through the state. And so that will be moved onto the grant. And then finally, our facility and our cleaning supplies were were a little bit higher than what we had anticipated at the beginning of the year. And that is due to all of the the cleaning needs and the sanitation products and the hand sanitizer. However, the grant has been especially helpful in purchasing those items. And then lastly, with the food service program, we are continuing to trend in the direction that we have been going in over the past few months. You can see that as of March 31, we have served just about 32,300 meals for lunches. And then for breakfast, we've served just over 12,000 breakfasts. I know that Diane Cofer and her team are continuing to work diligently to try to increase those numbers. With only three really days so far of full in-person learning, we have seen an increase. But we also lost a week of revenues in the month of April. So we will continue to watch the food service program very closely in terms of where they are trending. And that concludes my presentation on COVID-19. Are there any questions on what I've just presented?
I don't see any question, Becky.
Okay.
Okay. I would like I'd like to entertain a motion to accept. Oh, and it's not to get to the next part, I'm sorry.
Then, so we have two reports for the revenue report included in your packet. We have both the February and the March revenue reports. If you recall, last month, I had provided an overview of the revenue report as of February 28, 2021. And the corrected version of the actual report was forwarded to the school committee this month for review and approval. I will mention that during the month of March, we received our monthly Chapter 70 allocation, as well as the third quarterly assessment from the town of Northborough for the March 1 payment. We also received our first regional transportation installment, which was something we had been waiting anxiously for. And then the athletic receipts did come in. We saw a healthy fall to registration. And so those receipts did come in during the month of March. We are awaiting receipt of our third quarter circuit breaker funds. We had the honor of being selected for an audit for our circuit breaker submission. And so our, we have, actually, we did a great job. I commend Marie Allen and Sandy Burgess in her area, and then also Caroline Willard in my office for going through that audit. We are actually anticipating a slight increase on our circuit breaker receipts for FY21 as a result of that audit. So it's not often you walk out of an audit with with a positive balance. So a great job to them.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to entertain a motion to accept until audited the statement of review revenue for February 28, 2021, and the statement of revenue for March 31, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Paul Bucka, second?
Second. Chris.
Second by Chris Covino. Any discussion of the motion on the table? This is a roll call vote. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Polczko?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And it passes unanimously the nine members that are present.
The next item in the packet is the FY22 Budget Calendar. I will just highlight the next date of May 1, which is the Northborough Annual Town Meeting. So the Saturday at 9 o'clock. And we'll be having a brief meeting at 8:30, just in preparation. And then May 22 for the Southborough Town Meeting. So those are the two milestone dates in terms of the budget calendar. Also in your packet is the FY22 School Committee Approved Budget for your review. And that concludes the superintendent's report to the committee.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Going on to our agenda, E, under Old Business, we have none at this time. Letter F, Policy and Development and or Distribution, none at this time. And we are back to the normal letter G, Audience Sharing. If there are any audience members that would like to share, could you please raise your your hand at this time?
Mr. Bucka is the only hand I see at this point in time.
Okay. Paul?
Thank you, Joan. I have a couple of things. For the last couple of weeks, I've been kicking myself for thinking that we've gone this whole year with the mascot study committee going going full bore. And yet, in the background, we were probably still ordering uniforms with tomahawks on them, only to learn that our brand new hire, Principal Bevan, who must have been working here for all of two weeks at the time, told our told our athletic director, Mike Masamino, to make sure that no new uniforms that were ordered had tomahawks on them as of last August. I think he said he 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 provided that instruction. So kudos to Sean, number one. And then number two, for the for the information of the committee, the audit committee met with Tom Scanlon from Scanlon and Associates yesterday, I guess, and and went over the results of of the latest audit for for last year's finances. And we could not have come out cleaner. He found, I mean, it was it was the shortest meeting I think I've ever had as as a member of the audit committee. He found virtually nothing. He commended us for correcting the few minor things and suggestions that he had a year ago that went through. There was like one, almost, almost seems a little silly sort of request that that he had that he said is good practice. And so Becky and Greg agreed they would take it on going forward to just kind of send send information letters out to local banks to make sure no one's using our our name or title or tax ID appropriately. I think it's kind of a funny request, but apparently it's it's a good practice. We will, we will pursue it. But, you know, the way this guy talked about our audit, how clean we were, how responsive we were to him, and how thorough all of our documentation was, was information well we're sharing with the committee tonight. So I wanted to take a moment to do that. We're actually in our finance team.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Are there any other audi, I mean, school community member reports or anything? Seeing none, Greg, are there any audience members that have raised their hands?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close out the audience sharing. Going on to letter H of the agenda, Personnel Report.
So in your packet is the Personnel Report. And I think at the the May meeting, I'd recommend that we, the committee, spend some, a few minutes recognizing those retirees. So Maura Morrison is on the Personnel Report. She will be retiring at the end of this academic year. And I think it would be great to honor and congratulate those retirees at the May meeting.
Okay. Communications. In our packet is a communication from the Worcester Regional Retirement System.
So just a notification about its regular scheduled meeting and a granting a 3% cost of living adjustment for its retirees and beneficiaries.
Okay. Approval of bills and payrolls. We have that assignment as a subcommittee. And I guess that's being done electronically. K, Agenda Items for Next Month. What we have posted is School Choice Public Hearing and Vote, May. And number two, Discussion on Superintendent's Evaluation Process. Number three, Election of Officers, which will be held by Southborough Regional Members for Chair, Vice Chair, and the Secretary. Number four, we have the Fine and Performing Arts Department Presentation. Greg, you just mentioned recognition of our retirees. And I'd also like to add onto that, I think, Greg, you and I talked about it. That was the letter that was dated March 11. And it was sent to you and CC'd to all the chairs of the three committees. And that was the Tiered Focus Monitoring Report for Special Education and Civil Rights. So if you could extend to Marie Allen, it's through you to be onto that on on to the May agenda.
I'm sure Marie was thrilled that I made that recommendation.
I'm sure she did. I think she was like, oh, Joan remembered that letter. Oh, my gosh. Okay. At this time, I see we have two hands raised, Kathleen Polczko and Paul Bucka. Kathleen?
So, so Agenda Items for Next Month are Election of New Officers, which means that this is Joan's last meeting as Chair of the Regional School Committee. And what a heck of a meeting it was. So I just want to thank Joan for agreeing to take the helm of what we knew was going to be a tumultuous year. And you just, you were a chair who chaired every meeting with grace and aplomb. And I thank you. And just, thank you very much.
Well, Kathleen, that means a lot coming from you as one of the senior members. And I cannot take all the credit because I think it's a combination of everybody and working with consensus and listening to everybody. Going into this meeting is, some of the meetings have been really, you know, tough, but they've never been contentious because I think we all get along really well and we listen to each other. And I think that we model what we want our faculty, our administration, and we want the students to be. And we all love this district, and I think that's why we work our hardest. And it's been fun, especially the Zoom meetings. It's been unbelievable. And so I'd like to thank you very much. And guess what? We're done here at like 9:35 at night. I thought this meeting would go longer. If we were in the library, we'd have to stand up and wave because the lights would be off. But we got it done. But I think that, you know, I just hoped I I followed in the role of previous chairs. And I just hope that that you you could see that I was giving everybody an equal voice on this. And all of you have pulled in together. Sean O'Shea was wonderful to work as Vice Chair, and Karen was as Secretary. She had to pull in and she had to go and do those minutes when we went into executive session and get them, you know, to share a livery. So again, it takes a village, but I'd like to thank all of you because it was a pleasure to work with you. I learned a lot, and I have a lot of great memories. So thank you very much. Thank you. Paul Bucka?
Thanks, Joan. Yeah, you did well. Congrats on that. It was a good, it was a, it was a hell of a year. One other agenda item, though, for next year, I think, I think the public would want to know what sort of progress we've made in the new mascot naming search committee. That maybe ought to be an an ongoing item that we carry for a while.
Okay. All right, thank you. And as.
Sorry, there's one other agenda topic, too, and that is the handbook, the High School Handbook.
Okay. And per our policy, if board members, you see that I am chairing the May meeting, it will only be for a minute or less, per our policy. it will only be for a minute or less, per our policy. Uh, the most senior member, which happens to be me, just chairs the meeting and until a chair is elected and then I hand the gavel, though I don't have a gavel on hand, over to the newly elected chair, which will come from Southborough. And so in between that time, Greg and I will be working on the agenda for next meeting, but thank you everybody for uh, for your input. Looks like we have a heavy agenda. We never have a light agenda, so.
I'll just, Jo- Joan, quickly, I'll just go down memory lane with Kathy Key where her, her chair term was extended several months, so I think, I think her chair term extended into, was it September?
It was like September or July, yeah, because we didn't have the local elections. And so we could not do, we went through that whole bit, well, who's chair? Yes, yeah, it's amazing how the pandemic changed some things, but boy, we learned a lot through it, so I, I would think, think that the pa- pandemic was really challenging, but boy, we all worked together and we, we exceeded and we got A plus plus on all that. Thank you very much, everybody.
Joan, can I, can I ask a quick question? Sorry, I can't even speak right now. So, um, Greg, do you think that we'll ever have, like, do you think by the fall, we'll be able to meet in person? Not that I don't like my Brady Bunch screen.
No, that's probably an a- agenda item um we should add to uh next month's meeting as well to talk about plans to return to normal.
Okay. I mean, now we all have, we'll all have to shower and get dressed.
And put shoes on. I know.
I'd be well worked.
Wow, who's ever going to be chair? You have a full agenda already, so, okay, this time at, the time of being nine forty.
I move in here.
Made by Paul Bucka, seconded by?
Kathleen.
Kathleen Holland? And I'm sure there's no discussion on this, but I'll ask. It's a roll call vote. Sean, thank you very much for helping out tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you for everything, Joan.
Thank you. Karen Ayers?
Yes.
Paul Bucka?
Yes.
Chris Covino?
Yes.
Paul Desmond?
Yep.
Kathleen Holland?
Yes.
Kathy Key?
Yes.
Sean O'Shea?
Yes.
Kathleen Pletchko?
Yes.
And myself. And Greg, it was a pleasure, I need to say, it was a pleasure to work with you in as another capacity, in this capacity as superintendent and as chair, so thank you very much. You are a true leader. We're very lucky. Okay, and at this time, we are adjourned. Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.
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 Be well, be safe.